Okay, everyone, six o'clock. Let's get this meeting going here. Welcome to our study session for November 18th. We have five members here tonight. And turn around to Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for being here on this cold winter night. Hopefully, the sun will come out soon. The purpose of our study sessions is to exchange information, build trust, have robust conversations, so that we can be sure that we have efficient decision-making at the board table. Tonight, we are going to be taking a look at our draft legislative platform. We also will have an update from our latest FLEUR meeting and our construction updates. We're also going to be spending some time. We brought back some additional data, as well as some capacity plan information for the board to consider and discuss as we look at our enrollments and budget and long-term planning. Kevin Schuttinger will be here with us to share some information from our American Indian Affairs Advisory Committee. Got a couple of policies to look at, and then we'll close up to go into a regular meeting to do a little activity on some of our construction work. So that's what we've got on the agenda for this evening.
All right. As part of our governance and policy here, just looking at the board agenda monthly review, like Terry said, we're going to be going over some policies and then, as it relates to, I'm not going to get used to this thing, okay, to B, we're in the reviews and construction, so the educational space, and then we're doing operational oversight on long-range planning and budgets. All right? With that, I think we can go to legislative.
Excellent. I'll just open up, and then I'm going to hand it over to Michael and the committee members. One of our goals this year was to get out a little bit earlier with our platform. And so, we've been meeting since September, reviewing some of the other organizational legislative platforms that have come out. And while we understand that this is a policy year, not a funding year, we still have kept some of the funding information out here. We think it's a really important educational piece to our community and to our legislators. And, you know, who knows when the state budget comes out, you know, if there will be some funding available, we want to be sure that we're able to speak to our priorities. So with that, I'll let Michael, I think, take it, talk a little bit about the process we used and a little bit about where we landed. And really, tonight, we want to get input from everyone at the table. I have shared the draft with administrators to see if they had any feedback on it. And then, our goal would be to get all of your input and to come back on December 9th to seek approval.
So I won't go through and read everything. I think a handout was passed around with our draft version of the platform this year. I just wanted to give you a little background to how we got to this. We had a few meetings where we reviewed the legislative platforms prepared by AMSD, MSBA, C, Southwest Metro, Minnesota Association of School Administrators, and Minnesota Community Education Association. So we started had all these laid out in front of us, went through different discussions, did try to see what are the points that we want to continue to bring up, but not the labor ones that come up all the time and don't get attention that will come up, which that didn't probably make much sense. But what we would like to do is maybe have you take a look at this. We're seeking some input tonight to see how you feel about the draft, but we also want to get your input on a few other things. One is, we've spent some time discussing how effective the legislative dinner really is when we have the legislators come in, have dinner with us and talk. How productive is that really? And we are looking at the option, we want to run by you for input, of maybe trying to set up some local individual meetings with our legislators prior to, you know, after the first of the year when we go down to the Capitol with different groups. So what we'd like to do is meet with them on a smaller basis, not in a formal, they just present to us basis, and try and get a better sense of what is really helpful to them, what will make an impact when we go down and meet with them at the Capitol. And give us a heads-up. What are you looking to? What do you want us to bring to the table? What will really help you advocate for us when we are there? What we would do is see if we got approval, general approval from you to take that direction as we would work with Martha to try and set up some meetings. Ideally, we would have a vote of our legislative platform on December 9th. If we're able to meet with any legislators before that, we would ask if you're comfortable sharing a draft of our platform with those legislators or not. And then, our bigger term thinking is, for the times we look to going down to the Capitol or engaging at a state level, are there ways we can go beyond Dr. Stallow and a few board members just showing up in their office? Can we engage the community a little better? Maybe that means we do an information session one night about how state finance and legislation affects us at a district level. Maybe there's some parents or community members who'd like to get more involved and join our force in advocating for us. So it's not the same old, every year, we show up and knock on your door, it's the same three people. But really, get our community involved. And part of that effort is just to educate them on how we rely on the state and how their decisions are impacting what we're doing as a board and as a district. So it kind of leaves that engagement piece of our community that also needs. So I don't, if you'd like, I can just give you, I don't need to read you if you don't want to. If you want to spend a minute to kind of look at the draft, and then I'd love some feedback, or we would love some feedback, on what your thoughts would be about kind of restructuring how we do those meetings, looking to maybe involve other community members down the road, and perhaps removing that legislative formal dinner and replace it with more face-to-face discussions ahead of the real advocacy days that we go down for. Did I get everything?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. I'd like to start off, first of all, I think that the dinners that only come with formal dinner by any stretch of imagination, I think we have a sandwich thing out there or whatever.
Right, right.
We don't have to have it here, but I do like the format because it allows, first of all, they have to sit there and present their plan. Now, obviously, they try to, like every politician does, because they know they have an audience, to either use their time wisely or not, or state where they stand or not. And I think we've seen in one year where they actually stated where they stand, another year where we got a brief update and hardly anybody asked any questions in this past year, where one of them stated specifically where they stand and the other one didn't. Matter of fact, you know, would be safe to say rambled on for several minutes with absolutely no purpose. But that's up to us. I think what we need to do is, first of all, advertise that we're having the legislators here in a little bit more than just maybe the board meeting. Invite people, maybe have the initial meeting with them in a less school-based place so that people outside the district felt comfortable showing up to it. But I do, I would like to put the onus back on the board to say, we should come prepared with questions and maybe have a pre-meeting, so we make this more of an interactive instead of a one-sided. But I don't think it's going to help to have a meeting with them in their office or without, you know, everyone present to hear what they're saying, because I think there's power in that. I think there's power in having the legislators speak in front of a crowd, because they know that then they're going to be held to the word. And as long as we decide or set the rules of engagement, I think that's going to be a lot more productive.
When you weren't talking about going down to the Capitol for these initiatives, we were talking about, let's meet for lunch, one-on-one, or let's go to a coffee shop. And we, they want to use their time effectively, but so do we. And so, I do feel like even if we come with questions, I'm wondering, what we're wondering, and we're just looking for the feedback, is, are we a little bit at the mercy of what they decide to speak at us with whether or not we have questions? Can we get more done individually? In other words, can I talk to one of them and say, I'm putting my materials down together for advocacy day. What do you really want to hear from me when I come down? What would really help you stand up and advocate for us? So maybe it wouldn't even be eliminating that. I've only been to one of those dinner presentations, so maybe that was different than past ones? So would it be a both-and sort of thing?
What stops us from, any of us individually, I mean, I've done it before, I've met with them.
Right.
For coffee and for other things.
Sure.
And just tried to get, and the thing is, is what I find is what they are willing to say one-on-one, where they don't think, they don't have an audience, a little bit different. And of course, because we're advocating as a group, I think it's still important that we, I think, I do, I believe that we set the rules of engagement when they come here. I don't think we should let them do it. Does that make sense? That would be my...
And that, we are going to ask you questions and want you to answer them, or...
Well, we set the agenda, however we decide to do it.
Yeah.
But we don't just sit down and just let them eat and talk. We actually have an agenda and are making sure that we have objectives and those objectives are met.
Has that worked in the past? Have we done that?
It's normally, it's been, we've shared, we, I think that the agenda items, if I recall, are, and I think we usually talk about, should we share ours first, should they share theirs first?
Yeah.
But I think last time, we shared our platform.
Platform.
We shared our platform, and then they had a chance to, and they do some predictions, as Mary said. I don't know that they really spoke to any of those. They might have. They might have spoke to some of our issues.
Maybe too, if you could fill in a little too, because it's just coming out of my mouth, but from our dialogue.
Those, yeah. Thank you.
Sure. I think the platform we had, the setup that we have right now, is good because it's in the public.
Right.
So members of our community can join, it's publicized, and we talk in advance, we come up with some questions, and they have some, we have some dialogue going back and forth, and I think it's very productive. It is what it is, but I think it would be negative to have it offsite someplace in a one-on-one meeting, because we want to have openness and transparency with the public.
So a couple of dates, I just looked at dates as we were talking. I do think earlier is better.
Yeah.
If we can get it in before the session starts. We haven't had perfect attendance. I think that was one of the downsides, too. We wondered about, we haven't had perfect attendance, and we may not again with our legislators, but we'll do the best. January 27th is a study session, so we have to go quite a bit earlier. February 10th is the board meeting date. Those would just be the January, February. I stayed away from the board meeting, but...
And often, because we had it right bumped up next to a board meeting, because that way, if the public wants to come and hear both, we're already here.
Yeah, I think we, I think it's always been either a study session night or a board meeting night.
Yeah, yeah, it has. I think, yeah, the only, I know from going down to the Capitol with AMSD and C over the years, I mean, they have always said, if you can get parents and get some people in front of them, it's really important. So I think, if anything, that's a key thing that we need to bring forward, no matter if this process changes or not, is to really get advocates. And so, being able to engage with parents, you know, in just some form or another, and this allows them an avenue as to which to talk to the legislators. And I think it's, in my opinion, I think, you know, we'll continue, I think, with the days, we're talking about the days, the specific days, but to really be a goal is to get some people other than us at those events. Can we do a little bit better advertising then and pushing this as a separate... Yeah. I honestly, I think you can invite, 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 to be honest, a personal call or something. I mean, we have parents that come to the meetings, and we could help them. I mean, students would say, hey, this would be a great avenue, you've shown some interest and, for whatever reason, here's another avenue to advocate for our district and to learn more things. I mean, I think, to me, in my opinion, a personal invite's a lot easier than sending out a mass email. Not that we shouldn't, but you're going to get a lot better response if you give a full talk from somebody. So I just think that's something that we should be looking at. Jonathan, what do you have?
I would reiterate, I think Michael's, one of my favorite phrases, "both-and," right? I don't know that we should do it one or the other. I do like the idea of, if we all have opportunities, to find time to see those folks in individual conversations and not necessarily downtown on the big day.
Right.
I think that's when you can have a little bit more genuine, less politician-y conversation and get a feel for where people are and how they feel. And that can inform our own preparation for when we do have them here, if we're able to do that. I think to Mary's point, if we, those of us who want to do that should have the ability to do that. I don't know how structured...
Well, I'm not saying, I think that's two different conversations.
Yeah, exactly.
There's your job is what you want to do as your own individual politician, but then there's the actual platform that we have to put forward, that the engagement committee is tasked with pushing forward. And that's, I think, specifically what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I guess to me, being armed with our agenda is how we go into that conversation, whether it's the dinner with them here, or it's us having a cup of coffee somewhere.
Right.
To know what we're trying to accomplish and what our agenda is and how that conversation would go. And I, and I will also, I guess, reiterate your statement that I think, I don't know how we could advertise to the community of the parents that these are happening beyond what we normally do, but I do think we all know a large number of people who are interested in what's going on in this, you know, in our district, who if we reached out and said, going to have our legislators here, we're going to be kind of asking them some questions on where they stand, we'd love to have a room full of families that they get to talk to. I think you'd get, I think you'd get response.
Yeah. So we're hearing, stick with the dinner, it sounds like, for some form of...
And one of those January or February dates?
Yes.
Sure. Can I make a suggestion, though? Should we, in order to control the agenda a little bit more, should we have a pre-meeting or send in questions or something to make sure that certain things happen?
Well, we, last time, we, each of the committee members presented a part of our platform. So, I mean, we present it first. I think we can definitely, like, the group can meet, we can meet and give feedback. If there's specifics on how we want that to run, we can...
Sure.
I mean, I don't know, Michael, what do you think about that?
Yeah, definitely. I think that would be good.
If there's specific questions, I guess we'll ask the board members to send those questions in, and then we can...
Was part of our goal to kind of get them familiar with their platform prior to having them here.
Right, yeah. And that should have happened anyways, right? Because, I mean, they're getting, they should have added email to them at least, so they know what to address.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But what are objectives? I mean, because it kind of sounds like everyone's getting something different out of this. So when we do this, do we have objectives we're trying to meet during these meetings?
What would be the outcome? I mean, what are your desired outcomes? They're going to come out and say, you're going to get to them too. I don't think they're going to say that.
No, what I meant is... In the small group meetings, like, I would want to say to them, tell me how to show up and advocate in the best possible way, one-on-one with somebody. Here's what we're looking at, what would you do add? But just, let me be best prepared when I take your time in January and I find your office and do the day when everyone's sitting in their office and they go through, you know, you're signed up time after time, and they see all these advocates come through. I want to know, you know, is it getting parents in front of them? Is it...
Well, we know that. They've said that before, that they like to have, so we already know that part.
So is a desired outcome to have them then respond to each one of our objectives and where they stand on it?
Not that mean. I think we're more, we're directing how we could be, oh, on the dinner meeting?
Yeah. Is that, if that's an outcome, then we have to structure it like that, is what I'm trying to say, so...
I guess that's the guidance we're looking for from you, because if we stick with the dinner, then how should we use it to our best advantage? So that's good. This is good feedback. I think we should decide, that is a group, what would that be, desired outcome? But...
Yeah.
I think we were really just, the smaller meeting idea, even if it was a both-and, was, how can we best be of service to them so they can best be of service to us? How can we give them the best tools to advocate on our behalf and not just have it be, it is what it is?
This is what we want, this is what you say.
Yeah.
This is what you want, this is what you need.
Talk to me, there's no audience, there's no cameras, not promised, just say, how can I, how can I do a better job advocating?
Help me, help me.
I don't, and I, and I think it's something to educate the community on, too, because I don't know if they realize how much the state impacts what the board does and the district does, so...
I think they do, but I, here's the thing, is we have to understand this, no matter what, is they are politicians, and what they say to you in private is not something they may or may not repeat.
Oh, I'm not asking for help.
And we're saying, help me, help you. I mean, it is, especially during the beginning of the session, if we ask them where they stand on something and they don't agree with something, then we should understand why so we can do it that way. So again, I want to go back to, when we do the dinner, regardless of how we get to the dinner, in order to make it as worthwhile to everyone here, including the public that may come to visit, what do we want to make sure gets accomplished?
So as opposed to, we'll present and they present, maybe more of a, we'll submit some questions or...
Well, I think that is one of the goals. I think that is one of the goals. I think one of the goals is to say, we continue to prioritize having time with you before your crazy schedule starts. Our goals are to share with you what our platform is, knowing you've got a lot of groups like us coming, but we want to be sure that they know what our priorities are. We want to hear, whether it's, you know, on each of these, I don't know that we've ever done that in the past, not that we couldn't, but we also hear kind of their, what do you think the session's going to be like? And maybe that's not useful to us, maybe it is. That's how it has been, you know? And then I think it's, I think it's that continual relationship building, again, I think.
I agree.
Say, we're prioritizing this, they're prioritizing it to sit down and have a conversation. But we certainly could have tighter outcomes.
Yeah, if they're willing to do that. They may not.
Right.
So what if we do this? And I was just, and I know Jonathan will say something, I just want to say, based upon what I'm hearing, okay, and what I think would help was, instead of presenting the whole platform at once and even splitting it up, you know, and having different people read from it, what if we present the first one and get their feedback, and then the second one, and they get their feedback, and be able to go back and forth, and then the third one? Because otherwise, we're giving almost a soliloquy to them, and they're just letting go, and then, yeah, so we're missing each other, right? And that's kind of what's happened.
Would that help as far as changing the agenda and the way this went?
We sure can, I'm sure we can.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see what we get.
So a couple of things. Is Jonathan...
I was just going to say, I think regardless of the specifics about how we decide to kind of lay it out, and I like that idea as a possibility, I do, I think, changing this from a get-together to something where we have an objective, I mean, I love the fact that you brought up the word "objective." What are we trying to accomplish by having this discussion with them? And it's, it's not going to be to put them on the spot and grill them, but it is, I think it is fair for us to want to know how they feel regarding to our platform and our legislative agenda for them. They represent us. I think that's, I think it's a great idea, and I think we leave it to the legislative committee to kind of plan how they want to go about that, and all of us can have input.
Okay. So we'll, we still have to read through this, we haven't done, because we've just gone through process.
Right.
But we'll come back with like an agenda, what we're thinking about the next time. We're actually meeting tonight and after this meeting. So we can come up with some details.
Dates.
And dates for the next meeting. We'll bring that to the December meeting and have a report. Is everyone uncomfortable with that process? Jonathan, for anyone? Okay. Can we look at the detail of this so that we can...
Does everybody want to read it themselves, or do you want to read through it?
Yeah, I think you can, everyone can read. All right. I think there's nothing like, Ursula and Shaka are not here, but...
I want to point to the ensure safe and modern school facilities. I hope we need to have that and modern. Safe schools is what we're talking about.
Yeah. Go ahead, you went...
No, sorry.
Okay. I think we're trying to tie that in with long-term facility maintenance as funding, as a steady source. So I think that's kind of why you're seeing that. May I begin on that?
I have a question, because the safe school grant, or whatever it was, it was that, it wasn't a, it was a one-timer.
Correct.
And our goal here is not to have it be a one-timer, have to have the read.
Yeah, that was the question that we...
That was one of the questions we were... See, the language that C use today, I was, I'm on the legislative committee there, and they, I don't have it in front of me, but they, their language stipulated, make this a funding stream.
A funding, yeah, a more permanent, yeah. And we were debating that.
So we'll look at that. I think that was stronger, too. I thought that was stronger language.
So you consent to some doing that more permanent?
I would like that. How much work does it take from you guys to make sure that we reapply for this all the time? I mean, it's not a simple form, I don't think.
Well, the latest we got from the state was just excess funding, so we didn't apply for that one at all. The other grant was, it's a little bit of work, but...
And there's no guarantee.
And there's no guarantee.
Especially staff into it when it's grants.
So let me just flip this around. Does it reduce our resource cost for them to just make it evergreen going forward? Is that what we're looking for? And is that continuous stream? And we could also add in there that it does reduce overhead expense costs?
The grant was only a one-time grant, so that we haven't had to apply for it more than the one. All of our other finance facilities are all reports that we are required to do on a yearly basis. So long-term facility maintenance, safe schools, but they're not a grant like we got for the front entrance of the ALC. That's a difference. That was a one-time also.
Right. So we were asking for a continuous percentage of that funding stream, we're saying, no more one-off grants, just give us a percentage of X, Y, and Z. It could potentially save our overhead cost? And will it help us keep the facilities modern and keep that in there?
Well, and it allows us, if so, so what C's position was today is that they said, keep that, take that 30 million and just, if there's especially going to be excess budget money, just make that permanent. Make that 30 million permanent. And then each district, you know, whichever percent each district got this time around, I would guess that would, that would be fairly constant, but that you at least can plan for.
Right.
If it's a consistent funding stream, you can plan for it and know that you're going to have that year over year, whether it's for facilities or it's for people or whatever that is. So I would agree with you that the language of C's, and I don't have it in front of me, but we'll, we can change that and then bring it, send it back out to you to see if that makes more sense. All right, we'll do that.
How about under stabilize the funding? Anybody have anything?
Just a yes.
Are we looking for an inflationary percentage and just leave it at that and just keep it going and not have to go through these arguments every year? Or are we going, or are we going for something else here?
Well, we can say two inflation, like the basic formula, two inflation. So I think, yeah, we're trying to, you know, I think the argument out there, or the statement out there right now is, you know, the basic formula would have $650 more if we would have kept up with inflation than it was right now, and a lot of districts wouldn't have to be going on referendum, everything's a lot. So I think, and you're seeing referendums happen now with the inflationary language. So, yeah, I think, you know, we're trying to push for that, because the two and two is not keeping up with inflation. So, you know, you're constantly in cutting mode, basically.
History question, and I don't know if anybody's going to know, but I'm assuming that it was, there must have been a legislative act at some point to allow districts to ask for their levies to have an inflation adjustment to them?
When was that? It was a while ago.
Yeah.
You can, every time that you ask for an operating referendum, you can either ask your taxpayers for just a stagnant amount, or you can ask for an inflationary.
Yes. And I got that. My question is, and did, I'm assuming that the legislature at some point changed the rules for districts to allow districts to do that, and my, and to me, one of your arguments to the legislators for why we should, by the state ought to be doing it, is you gave us that ability, because obviously you see that it's important for schools to have consistent funding. Our biggest funding source is you. That's why it should be done at that level. Yeah, it's nice that you're letting us do it with our smaller funding source, why don't you do it with our primary funding source?
I think the thing is, is what we're asking them to do is take education funding from being used as a piñata between the two parties. That's, that's a nutshell, okay?
I don't think the language of adding an inflationary factor is, is all that argumentative, except for the fact of they use us as one of their negotiating points on both sides. So it's, it's, we're asking for a political thing. And the one question that if, if I'm in there, she's, the first thing I'm going to ask is, we haven't kept up with inflation for a while, so is there a hook in here that we have to become grandfathered up? Because some districts are really behind, you know, and, and, and the funding and stuff like that. So we haven't been keeping up with inflation. If we start keeping up with inflation, is that, because we, we had a time where we had no increases for a while. Is that actually even going to make up for the difference for us?
You know, so, it's so funny, because this is exactly the conversation that I've been in three different organizations, that it's like, what's the strategy behind it? This is the actual wording from AMSD. This one is. C is asking for, their, their stipulation here is asking for an additional 1% because the 2% didn't even keep up with inflation. So that's the approach they're taking, you know, so it's the same argument, you know.
And we want a continuous cash flow.
And I think, and I think that was the point of this, is saying, even though it's not a funding year, let's keep the conversation going, that if we had been keeping up with inflation, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in right now.
So which one are we better off, in asking for 3% or asking for an inflationary basis for the increases? Which one actually does us better strategically?
Well, are you asking about for the immediate future or for the long term? If we're talking about the immediate. Strategically, clearly, it's long term, because that would be continuing.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Inflationary.
So that would be better for us financially?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's, and if that's the case, then, then, then we shouldn't support the 3%. We should just go with inflation.
And they weren't supporting, C isn't support, so I don't think there's anything on any of the platforms that are going to come from any of our organizations that we won't say, yeah. They're not, they're not supporting a 3%. They're saying, again, this isn't a funding year. So instead of asking for this, because it's not a funding year, they're saying if there is extra money, we want the 1%, because the 2% didn't even keep up with inflation. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things where I think people are just trying, each organization is saying, what strategically helps us continue to educate our legislators, educate our communities, keep these same talking points that we keep coming back to? And, and maybe on, as you look at this, you know, maybe we don't have a lot of policy stuff. That second bullet under the stabilize, education funding is a policy issue. You know, certainly if they use the money and restore the 30 million on safe schools, it's funding, but it's not a funding year, but it would, you know, if we got it in, I think that would be a good thing. The equalization piece, you know, I think we in our community need to continue to talk about, because it's, it helps us, and that's, you know, that especially C is, is, supports that so much.
You know, I, I don't know, does AMSD actually write a sample bill for, for these legislators? Or do we just give them this and expect them to make the legalese adjustment?
Yeah, I mean, there's lobbyists that, I don't know, that they write the bill, but they certainly work really closely with AMSD and legislators to make sure that the position and the wording and things like that are pretty clear. So, yeah.
They're pretty involved.
They're very involved, yeah.
And they usually present when we're out of the Capitol, too?
Yeah, yeah.
So anything else missing? Anything else from here, from the platform at all that you, any other talking points, either in terms of continuing to educate our legislators on our positions? Any other issues that you'd like to see here?
We kind of stuck with three, just from the standpoint of, we know, three is kind of a magic number. I mean, it's, it sticks in their mind. They can leave with, usually remembering three things. So we didn't want to get it too crazy.
Do we prioritize these?
I mean, funding, we put as number one, because that's generally number one on everyone's. And I wouldn't say the other two have any prefer, priority over the other. But we, the funding is definitely the number one.
And is the third bullet off the first one, address what portion of the cross subsidy we're currently doing? Or is that, are we expecting the state to make up for the federal here, or how is that being interpreted?
That's a great, that's a great question, and it was, it's, actually, it's a great question, but it's one that we've talked about both at AMSD and C, is, do you add the cross subsidy language as a way to continue to educate? Or do they know enough that we're okay with just this? So I, I think that's open for discussion for sure, whatever you think is best.
Well, I think we've educated the public pretty darn well on cross subsidy and the gap. And that's been going on for years, and I think it really came to a head this, this past year, which is really good. So I would prefer to stay with consistent language.
With the cross subsidy.
Yeah, the language, because it hits home.
Yeah. And they did make a little progress.
So we can revise that a little bit to have.
No, I'm not saying anything like which is there.
Okay. And then what is the correct process going for? Will we revise it?
We'll revise it, and I think.
Prior to the board packet then? For December 9?
Well, we have a study session before the actual meeting.
That's right. So we can discuss that.
I know, it's not like super, like there's a lot of stuff in there, but we could. Well, if we make those couple of changes, I'm just, yeah. I mean, I think I said this to you guys, if we make those couple of changes, are you okay with it going straight to the board meeting on the 9? Because instead of going to the study session, to the study session? I know it's fairly cramped, so as far as.
I think it's fine to discuss it at the board meeting.
Yeah, I think it's fine if we discuss it at the board meeting, as long as, if anybody has any changes, then make sure they email.
Yeah, before the meeting. So that gives us a heads up? Yeah, okay, that'd be good. All right.
Thank you for all of that input.
Okay, and then we're going to oversight of operations. Dr. Stallow, would you want to?
Yes. Yeah, so Fleur got a chance to hear some of the updates from construction last Tuesday night, and we've got Jim Deville and Maureen Mullin with us this evening to provide additional updates to the full board.
Thank you. So again, as presented to Fleur last Tuesday, Jeff, you can roll the slide, please. Twin Oaks, this is the backside by the Art Rooms, directly west between the stadium and the school. The addition's going up there. You can see we're starting to put plastic up on the scaffolding, and we'll add heat so that we can continue to work through the cold weather. Hidden Oaks, the three additions in the back, along with the cafeteria, come along nicely. I think we'll be in there December sometime. So, and the finishes are going up now. It's, it's going quick. There's a little bit more hidden Oaks, that's the towers, and these are obviously dated. It's a lot of work every day. It changes daily. High School Activity Center, we, we still have a couple of pre-casts to go up. I think that goes up this week. And then we can start heating that space, drying it out for the concrete and the continued out of finishes there. Lake House Cafe, that's coming along. That, I think, opens up December as well. Just wrapping up finishes in there. The South Wings, D and E, they're, we're putting in glazing right now. And again, we're, we're pretty far along on those, and we're looking for a December time in there as well. Again, the map, the print that shows the, the areas, by how we call them in, in construction, it's a lot of work. You can see the different additions that will be done. Hamilton Ridge is moving right along. You can see flying up steel, working on sanitary sewer. Every day it changes, and it's, it's exciting for us.
So Jim, are we going to be in a position where we can actually work inside at Hamilton Ridge during the winter months?
Yes. We'll all add heat there, too.
That's probably good.
Are there any questions?
And I know a few of you have, have reached out to Jim and Maureen to do some tours. So if there's, if there's anything that you want to see, please feel free to contact them or any one of us, who, it's fun to see things in progress. It's fun to, like you said, it changes weekly. So just if you've ever got extra time and you want to get into some of the sites and see some of the updates, feel free.
Go ahead, Jonathan, I have a question too.
I was just gonna say one quick question. Just schedule-wise, we're back on track with the stuff? Or where, you know?
We're cautiously optimistic. We're looking pretty good, actually.
And then the other, the high school parking?
There's open.
We have no passes out there, right?
So staff are parking in there, and we're sharing with construction staging, and so far so good.
Okay, so it's worked well, kind of. Isn't it kind of quarantined after in the day or something?
Well, we get the vehicles in in the morning, and then they're, they're pretty much there all day, and then, you know, a couple will trickle out, but yeah, we're working. Not been an issue.
All right.
Thank you.
And everyone's getting their passes, so we're happy. The juniors.
Yeah, I haven't heard that they're not, yeah.
Oh, no, I heard, I heard happiness.
None of the happiness business.
Okay. Next up is Fleda.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Julie and Jeff presented at the last meeting some information around our budget and enrollment, and what that looks like in terms of capacity moving forward. So we're going to continue that conversation this evening. Your direction, based on your direction, we provided even, Julie's got a lot of amazing data to share with us. Jess, we're working on the capacity, and I'll let them take it from here. Thank you.
So yeah, thank you, Dr. Stallow. Really where we're at is a continuation of our first work session back in October. We're in the process where, again, putting things out there for you as a board to ask questions, discuss, and give us as district administrators parameters moving forward. I'm going to go through the first couple of slides here, and then as, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, Julie has put together some real background foundational components. I think given, looking at budget, long-term as well as short-term, it's really important information for the board to, to know, ask questions, and discuss. So again, like last time, we encourage your discussion and participation. Really, what we're looking to, out of this is having parameters. So then when we come back on December 9, we're able to present this, and as a board, you can give us direction moving forward. So again, you know, a guiding document, our strategic directions with our budget and our programings. And again, this is, this is what guides how we allocate our resources and the experiences that we want to have for our stakeholders. So our outcomes, I, I shared that already. Looking at revenues, expenditures, impact of enrollment, open enrollment, impact on districts' fund balance based on a projection model, and then again, providing administration parameters on student enrollment. In October, where we came out of that meeting, the parameter that we moved forward with was basing it on growth of 125 students. So you'll see that again tonight. If that changes, by all means, please bring that up, and we can have that. But that is the parameter we took, which is a difference from what we've had in the last several years, which has been growth of 250. And so again, we're still a growing district. 250 students a year is an aggressive amount of students. And so having fewer students this year, it's really trying to figure out, is this a one-time blip of fewer students coming into the district? Or is, is this maybe perhaps the start of maybe a short, or maybe one or two-year trend where we're not at that 250? So strategies for increasing revenues and strategies for decreasing expenditures. So our timeline, we started in October. We're back again. We've got later in the presentation, recommendations for you as a board to talk about, engage, and give us continued discussion and direction on, you know, that's where you think you need to be? Or those are some things you need to look at differently in preparation for December 9. And then ultimately, we've come back on December 9 with the board approving the budget for 1920, and then open enrollment. As we start to hit the turn of the new year, we're looking at kindergarten registration. We have a lot of, that is the historical time that, that students and families are looking to the next school year. And, and those are the questions that, per usual, are always come forward. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie.
Well, I added this slide, because this is what we just talked about, that you guys have just talked about exactly. And the reason I added it, because we talk about 2% on the formula. 2% on our formula. Our basic formula is 56% of our entire budget in general fund. So when you talk about 56% of our budget, and we're only getting 2% of that revenue, that's something that you have to understand is not, you know, when people think, oh, you got 2%, it's not on $100 million in our general fund. It's on just simply the revenue, the basic skill, the basic formula revenue, which is only a little over 56% of our budget. So I wanted to talk about that simply because, yes, there is a gap, and you have talked about that gap as far as your legislative priorities, but also that it's not a 2% on our entire revenue budget. And I think that's a piece that some people just don't understand, that it doesn't, that's why it doesn't cover so many of our costs. If we were getting 2% on our entire revenue budget, it'd be closer to $2 million. And we're at like 1.2, so you can see that it's not quite there. So that's the reason I brought that up and added that slide in there.
So we'll update this in your board packet as well, so that you have this. And I think it was just, like you said, Jermaine to the conversation, you just had about the importance of inflationary factors, too.
So this is a slide that we had brought to you, and what does our enrollment look like? We had this at our last meeting, and I wanted just to bring it up again to show you what our enrollment has looked like over the years for the, since 2014 and 15. And during those years, before we limited open enrollment, we saw growth throughout the year. And now we see that decline from the beginning of the school year to the end of the year. And I just wanted you to see that continuous growth that we have had until this 2019, 2020. This enrollment history is a breakdown of what does that enrollment look like? And so the dark blue line on the left for each year, that's five years, again, the 2014 through last year. The dark blue line is our total resident students. The orange line next to it is the residents attending Prior Lake Savage schools. The gray line is the residents out to other public schools. And the kind of golden rod color is non-residents attending Prior Lake School District. And then the light blue is our total students served, so they should add up together. The one thing that you're not seeing on here is that the gray and the orange lines don't necessarily add up the total students/residents, because we're not including those resident students attending a parochial school or homeschooled in our district. So those aren't identified on this slide, but I wanted you to be aware of that as well. And this is just information about our district. I think this is good information for you to understand, is our enrollment and our average class size. So the orange line is our average class size. You can see that we're that district, again, that grows every year. Then we start off small in kindergarten, or relatively small, if you want to say that, and we grow each year. As people move into the district, our student population increases at those upper grade levels.
And why is that, Julie? Why are one of the reasons we talk about the, the home?
The home values in our district are a little bit higher, a lot. Many parents don't come in as a first-time homeowner into the Prior Lake Savage School District. And so they're moving in, and that goes mid-sixth grade or upper elementary grade levels, even through high school. And as they move into their second home, they may be moving to Prior Lake, and then coming to school here when their children are at the sixth through ninth grade. Now, this is an important slide. I know this just seems kind of very boring and routine, but however, I think it does tell a really good story for our district. As we've been growing, this, this slide tells the story that we have been consistent in our ratio of student to staff. This is all our licensed student to staff ratio, so it's not necessarily one-to-one classroom teacher. However, it does tell the story that we have been consistent in, in managing our growth very well when you look at our ratio of student to staff. This is the latest data that I can get, comparative data. This is 2017, 18. These are our general fund revenues per ADM. And so you can see that Prior Lake Savage is on the left at that $10,634. And you can see the other districts surrounding us. They try to take those districts and that touch us or are close to us. And you can see that our revenues are less, by quite a bit, from other districts, our size, like Lakeville, Shakopee. And we'll talk about what those differences are, and what additional revenue that they see that we don't get, and why that we don't receive those revenues. If you go to the next slide, you'll see, this is a, kind of shows you where we receive our revenue. So when you look at state sources, that's $78,378. That includes all the revenue sources from the state, like special education and our categorical funding. Like, when I say categorical funding, I'm really talking about, like gifted and talented is a separate category. Though, so we have several different areas of categorical funding. However, that basic revenue is only about. funding. However, that basic revenue is only about $62 million. So you can see that that 2% isn't even on all of the state sources that we receive. And then you can see our federal and other sources are right about that 1.8 million dollars each. And our local sources, uh, is the 17 million dollars.
Julie?
Yes?
Just popped in. Our, our federal sources are those stable?
Yeah, pretty much stable. I, they go up and down. Um, this year we received less money in title funding because the state of Minnesota as a whole has fewer free and reduced lunch compared to the rest of the states in the country. So when we get allocated title funds, they look at, even though we don't have fewer students that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch across the dis, the state, when we compare ourselves to other states, our percentage went down. So our allocation also went down from the federal government because of that. Even though we have the same amount of free reduced, when we compare ourselves to other states, our percentage is less. Um, and then we did the same thing with the expenditures. You can see that, again, our expenditures are a little under our revenues, um, at 10 million, uh, 10,536 per student and, um, and comparing ourselves again to those other districts that surround Prior Lake Savage Schools. And here's where, go ahead, um, our expenditure areas, you can see salaries and benefits, um, which you would expect to see. We are a school district and we invest in human beings and so, um, in educating them. And so, most of ours, our expenditures are based on simply salaries and benefits. You can see purchase services and those are kinds of things like utilities and to keep our buildings running, supplies and materials, capital and then other expenses. And this is kind of a trend, this is a trend data for Prior Lake Savage Schools. And you can see our revenues and expenditures. And then this is a total fund balance. So it is different than what the board has recognized as our fund balance, just on us, our unsigned and assigned fund balance. This is overall total fund balance. And you can see how it has changed over the last five years again for the district and how much our revenue and expenditures have grown. And mainly because we've been a growing district. We've been getting additional revenues and then of course we have additional expenses because we have more students. And so that's the main place, that's the main area that our additional revenue is coming from is because we've had additional students in our district. Referendum authority, um, this is current year referendum authority. And as you know, some of these districts that are showing on the slide have just passed, um, um, referendums, um, head votes that pass that will increase this. Um, we're at 92397. You can see that Shakopee is in a blue color. And the reason that Shakopee is in blue is because they don't have a voter-approved operating referendum. Their board has chosen to authorize and, um, up until this year, they could choose to authorize $300 for an operating referendum without going to their voters. And that's what they have chosen to do. So theirs is at $300. Ours is at 923. You can see Farmington 790. And I know Rosemont's is going up, Lakeville's and Burnsville are all, will be increasing again next year.
So those districts that recently approved their referendum in November, those amounts are not reflective in this graph?
And they won't receive that money until next year. So it is, this is the referendum authority they have for the current year, their current budgets. And they will increase that, those for next year budgets as they move forward in planning those. Um, this is the tech levy. Um, as you can see, Prior Lake and Farmington don't have a tech levy, but all the others, um, school districts that you're seeing and the amounts of their tech levies, um, and that's per student as well. Um, a total, when so what, when I mean that's a per student, it's not like they get 2,365. That'd be great. Um, but what it means is that when they have more students or less students, that number fluctuates depending on what their, um, population is for their student enrollment. And so you can see that some of those districts are getting six and seven million dollars to help offset those expenses for technology needs in their district.
And so that's working comparably to the operating, it's per pupil?
It can, it can be, it can be. It doesn't, right, that's correct. And then, um, special education is a big hot topic item. And as we know, that special education funding formula has changed over the last, um, couple of years. And this is how, um, we compare to other districts. So the revenue is in, um, blue, the expenditures per ADM is in orange. And then the difference between those revenue expenditures, we show as a cross subsidy in that gray line, in the negative gray line. And our district is at $905, um, dollars compared to some other districts who are most closely with, um, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan. Um, however, they're getting a lot more money per student in their special ed than we are. But their cross subsidy is about the same as ours. Um, and hopefully with additional revenue that we're, should be getting based on that legislation, um, maybe this will decrease for our district in the future. Um, this really depends on those expenses for our district and the needs of our special education population. Any questions about any of this?
I'm gonna do it now, we're doing it. I kind of wanted to get through.
I'll go, I'll go through all of it.
Let's get through it, because this is a big.
I did, did have one question, just to explain this, because when people get their tax bill, they get the voter-approved and then they get the non-voter-approved levy. Where did that show up in here? Do you have an apples to apples comparison?
It's coming.
Okay.
I think it's coming anyway.
Okay.
Um, we have a free and reduced lunch trend. Um, you can see what I, what's happened in our district. As we came out of the recession, we saw a jump and over the years through that recession and then now it's back down right around that 11% for our district. And that's important because, and you can move the screen, that's important because when you look at our free and reduced lunch and you can see the decrease in the, um, percentage. But if you look at like Burnsville, Eagan Savage, 50% of their population has, um, is free and reduced and qualifies for free and reduced lunch. 35% of Shakopee District qualifies. And so, it very closely ties to the next slide in the additional revenue that they receive in compensatory funds. And when we talk about compensatory funds, uh, we're talking about the basic skills revenue and EL revenue. Um, so they're getting a lot more, um, revenue than we are because they have more students in the district that qualify. Now, there's a plus and a minus to that because when you show that socioeconomic, um, they have a lot higher percentage, those needs of those students coming into the district are much higher than compared to our district. However, when we're only receiving $616,000 for that, those students are spread across all of our schools. So it is much more difficult for us to educate those students as they spread across all of our schools in the district, um, because you're trying to spread $616,000 among 11 buildings. So it's much harder. So we do, um, utilize some of our general fund to help offset the needs of these students with our general fund dollars where maybe other, um, districts don't have to do that because they are getting the funds that they need to help with those students, that student population. But we do, um, subsidize, um, the needs of those kids with our general fund dollars outside of this source, revenue source. Here's, I think, Mary, and this is the latest data I have as well, the 17 data, 17, 18 data comparing us to other districts. Um, the first line, the blue line is the general fund and that, I believe, is, um, what you're saying, when you look at your tax statement, um, the voter-approved would be the gray and part of the blue because the blue would be some of the operating referendum. The only part that wouldn't be voter-approved is what the legislature requires us to levy our taxpayers for such as part of our operating, um, operating capital dollars is levy, part of our Q-COMP is levy. Um, there's some other smaller pieces of our, LTFM is another one that has part levy and part aid. So there's several components that by law, that the legislators have said, here's how much that you levy for and here's the aid component. If you reduce the amount of levy that you receive, they will reduce the amount of aid that you receive from the state in the corresponding amount. So if we decide to under levy, what they call under levy and not levy the maximum for certain components, then you would have also not received the aid in that same percentage. So if you want to compare us to other districts, you can see that we have a higher amount of, um, Fund VII because we're a growing district. You'll see we have more newer school buildings. We're still paying some of that debt off. Um, other districts have higher operating referendums. Burnsville, Eastern Cover County, Lakeville have higher operating referendums. You're gonna see that in the blue line. So the, the, can we go back just a second here? I know you want to rush me, but don't rush me. The gray is Fund VII, which is our debt service, which is buildings. So when we're paying those buildings off, that's the amount per student.
And this is 2017, 2018. Did this reflect the referendum?
No.
Okay, that's.
Yes, and that's correct. Nor does it reflect the referendums that they've had either. So it's the most current data I have. And yes, all of these will change. But I wanted to give you some sort of comparison data for this. And I know we talked about that a lot because it doesn't reflect it. And I know that, but also it kind of gets you and I, somewhat of an idea how we compared even before we passed our referendum.
Okay.
Now. So here's what our fund balance, we taught, we sho, um, shown you this slide before. Um, our fund balance with 125 additional students will continue to go down if we don't make some adjustments. Um, in either our expenditures or find another way to bring in some additional revenue, um, for the district. And I will pass this on to Jeff for capacity.
Yes. So, uh, at the last board meeting, we, there was a request around breaking it out by elementary, looking at, uh, the number of sections in our schools relative to number of students. And so, just trying to understand, there's a couple of things that I've put in here. And these are just models. Um, this is not to be representative as this is the preferred amount by administration or this is the preferred class size average. It really is from the standpoint of engaging the board in a conversation around the capacity that we have. So with our referendum, we do have what's considered five-section schools and you can see those, um, identified there. And then we also have Five Hogs in Glendale, which are largely four sections plus with the number of total classrooms available for educate, for, for general education or general classroom purpose. And then the Ola de Lago, Edgewood is a straight, um, 21 students. And so, what that one is, is a program cohort model. Just, we know that with it being immersion, we're gonna have students that are gonna come in at the front end of the program and either consistently stay with that, or I'll start to age out if they're leaving, or if we start having students come in from other immersion programs or heritage speakers. But largely those, um, the number of students in that program are gonna be relatively stable throughout their K5 experience. Uh, if anything, it may go down. Um, if we, if they either don't stay in the district and we're not able to bring more students in. And so, what we see is looking at, what this looks like is a straight class average of 23 students, um, relative to the number of sections at Redtail Ridge, Westwood, Jeffers, Hamilton Ridge, Five Hogs, Glendale, as well as Ola de Lago. And you can see the totals on the right-hand side for the numbers of kindergarten, I guess, capacity that we have and first grade. Um, same thing with second grade, of course, with it being a Five Hogs in Glendale with a four-plus school, those sections could shift if there are some bubbles there. Um, so we might have five sections that, you know, we might have a five section here at fourth grade, but largely with it being, you know, most of our class sizes, we have our five sections that are lower elementary, um, grade levels. And so as you see, um, the building capacities that match along the bottom with the information in your last board packet, looking at the capacity of, uh, 4,508 elementary students. Yes?
I do, and I know Jeff sent a memo to all of you, um, but I know we've got some audience members who were with us last spring as we did our boundary, uh, some of our boundary work. And at that time, we were also looking at, you know, we talked about nature-based preschool especially. And we had allocated, allocate, allocated at, uh, some of the modeling, um, some classes, some sections to Jeffers Pond, it's a great site, to Glendale, it's a great site. Jeff, in his memo said to you, none of these models speak to, speak to any of the pre-K sections. And that's programming that we can decide where that is, but just wanted to be sure that everybody's aware of that.
So Jeff, I counted 179 classrooms. How many classrooms are actually in here?
It should be what is indicated in that last board packet.
I didn't see the total number of classrooms K through five in there. Did I miss that? I'm sorry if I did. I was trying to figure.
We can look at that while I go through this and then I can circle back to some of the other conferences. Uh, Model B is a sliding scale. Again, this shows a, uh, average, class size average, maybe a bit more reflective, but it scales a little bit when you're looking at a class size average of 21 students at K1. Uh, grade two is 20 and three is 23 student average. Uh, grades four and five is 28. That is a, the 28 is a little bit on the higher side. Um, typically our averages have been more around 26 or 27 at our, at our fourth and fifth grade from a, from a re, you know, but we have had instances in our district where we've had classes at K1 above 21 students, above 23 students, again at grades two, three, and above 28 at grades four, five. And so again, this is just a model to help, you know, guide, provide some perspective and to really get your feedback on what is a capacity model you would like us to consider as we move forwards that we understand with our capacity relative to our enrollment coming in and what space we have for students. With that being said, you know, I prefaced this by saying, this, one of these is not the preferred. You know, there isn't, you know, I think we'd all like to have really low class sizes. And I think as a board historically, the school board has always prioritized low class sizes to the extent that we can feasibly make that happen from a budgetary and practical standpoint. And so, you know, there's the planning versus being able to, there, there's the ideal and then there's also, what's the operations of a school district? And I know a couple of board members or one in particular, we had a conversation and there's a distinction there I think we should have a conversation about. But again, as you start seeing this scaling, sliding scale, you start to see, uh, slightly more capacity than the straight 23, um, across the board. And this is how, um, this kind of breaks it out. When you look at the differences between capacity Model A, which is that 23 average, capacity Model B, you do see some differences anywhere between 662 students that we have additional capacity for relative to our current October 1, 2019 enrollment of 3846, as well as capacity Model B, 822. So, um, the next one is middle school. There was some conversation around middle school, uh, with Hidden Oaks, post-construction, 56 stations or classrooms. Twin Oaks, 48, looking at that capacity and again, current enrollment as of 10-1. You see that capacity difference at Hidden Oaks as well as Twin Oaks. Again, you're all aware, we use that as a campus. Um, but we're adding additional classroom space. If you look at 230 and 96, over on the far right, capacity of 326, you could divide that three ways, 109 students or 108 students per grade level, if you're looking at that type of capacity. Or, um, you know, as we've talked about in the past, uh, you know, what we talked about earlier tonight, if, you know, we're having more students come in at the sixth through ninth grade, it affords the district more flexibility, um, with enrollment relative to capacity. So, so what we, Julie has up here from the last board meeting, um, post-construction capacity, uh, for K5, 196.
After we take out special ed and, and then the ones that we use for pre-K.
But pre-K is at Edgewood. Pre-K and Edgewood's not factored in here. Edgewood is not factored for K5 programming in these scenarios.
And again, we can. And again, we can manage when we're, if we use pre-K classrooms, as we talked about with the community last year.
Yep, and that's, and that's a good point. Historically, we said where we've had space, we've offered nature-based pre-K. We've had a community that has, you know, responding to the requests of the community to offer nature-based pre-K. They've been very popular programs, but also too, when we've had some capacity components, we haven't always been able to offer as much as we can, even at Edgewood with Loa de Lago currently there, not being able to offer as many pre-K options as our community would like. And so, again, with additional space, as we open up more classrooms, we'll have more space for resident students, you know, K-12, K-12 programming, and we'll also restore Edgewood to, you know, a pre-K center for pre-K programming, and as we have space, offering nature-based pre-K. So. I think we're on the last couple of slides here, and so, I think we'll just put those out there in the, in the interest of conversation, to prime the pump, so to speak, and get some feedback. So, within our recommended budget enrollment parameters, what we're, parameter we're requesting the board to consider is stay within fund balance policy of eight to 12% of expenditures. Restore teacher-to-student class ratios to their intended amount. Last, in October, we, board work session, we talked about, we hired staff in anticipation that students would come, and we did not see that, you know, 250 students arrive unintentionally, we've lowered class sizes. And so, while that's a positive thing, it wasn't necessarily the outcome. We were anticipating, it wasn't intentional. And then, looking at open enrollment, given additional capacity, and having space for our resident students until, as our community continues to grow with residents, we have a gap between capacity and what our current enrollment is, is to be more flexible with open enrollment, and consider no limitations, which is something we would monitor for the current, for the school year going into 2021, and reevaluate capacity and enrollment on a annual basis through this process. Again, outcomes, timeline, and now our questions or discussion perhaps might be.
Okay. Who wants to open up questions? Questions, anyone? Mary, Michael?
No, I thought you were waiting to ask some questions.
No, I was just, who wants, I said who wants to open up. Go ahead.
So, again, first of all, I do not agree with no limitations. I think we should have boundaries around that. And Jeff, I think what we talked about is saying, okay, here's our ideal, and our ideal is to maximize educational opportunity, et cetera, because there are, there are consequences for increasing class sizes. There are consequences for teachers, staff, parents, kids, et cetera, for our educational outcomes. So we have our ideal, but then we also have what we need for budget. Obviously, there's a difference, and I think we need to have a conversation on the impact between those two, so we know we're making that choice. I don't think that changes our ideal class size. I think it just puts a reality into the factor that we need more kids in order to meet our budget requirements. But we always want to try to, you know, optimize the number of students in the classrooms, et cetera. And so, so we should always be starting with the ideal, and then making a decision each year to go above and beyond that, and, and understanding the net impact, because we are sitting in a, in a district where we are having a large percentage of our kids come in with some more issues than we've seen in the past, which I've seen it from all the districts too, it's not just us, where additional attention per student may be warranted. We also know the impact of, of having larger class sizes means we may not have the best test scores, et cetera. But that doesn't change the fact of that we need the money, and we're a lot better off not cutting staff or programs, because we need the money. So as long as we're understanding the choices that we're making, and, and verbalizing those choices, and saying, hey, you know, we don't have the funding we need, et cetera, to be able to make those decisions, then I think that's it. The other thing that I'd like to do is actually set that ideal and stated what we need for our budget capacity by grade level, and not open it up to limitations, because we've seen what happens when we front-load kindergarten. And then we do have the migration coming in between second and fifth grade, and then again, at sixth and ninth grade, that we have these bubbles, and it causes us to react to those. I'd like to be able to, to include that standard deviation to leave that space available in the event that we do get the open enrollment in. I think that's an, I think that's an important number to understand, and I think it's something that, that we should plan for, so we, because when you plan, you have less surprises. That's the whole goal. And surprises and re, you know, moving classrooms around and all that kind of stuff is going to happen, but we want to try to limit that. And then, the last piece is, is again, when we're looking at the total number of teaching stations, what you said is pretty critical. Some of those teaching stations are actually for special ed, right?
What we have here in capacity are K-5 classrooms. The special ed classrooms have already been factored in, but not into those numbers. So we have space for special education programming, EL programming. These are K-5 classrooms.
So if you have, so, do we have five classrooms for kindergarten through fifth grade at Hamilton Ridge?
Yes.
And that does not include English, okay.
That's correct.
How does that impact the numbers in each classroom then?
I don't think it impact, I'm not sure I follow your question.
So, so if we have a net capacity, but then we're, we're looking at average class sizes and multiplying it out, we, then we have kids that aren't always in the classroom because they leave for ELL or something like that. So I'm just trying to understand.
So, so they're a gen ed student first. So first and foremost, so we're not counting kids twice.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was asking. Okay.
So they're assigned, they, so that's a great question. So, if you're an EL student, you're assigned a homeroom teacher, and you're with that homeroom, you might, you might have some services that are included, where that teacher comes in and partners with the classroom teacher, but they're there. We do have center-based programs too. There's a center-based program at Hamilton Ridge. But again, even though they might be in a center-based program, they're still assigned a homeroom teacher. So while they might be in the center-based or more restrictive environment during the day, associated with their needs, they still have a homeroom teacher that they, that they participate in as much as they, their IEP allows them to do, so.
Okay.
Yep.
But when we go from second through fifth, and then again to sixth, when I put in all of the numbers that Julie has given us, et cetera, over the years, we do see that increase, because we might, because people migrate into our district with older kids. We don't necessarily have them coming in with babies and having brand-new families and stuff like that. So I want to see us leave that, and I calculated a 1.5% standard deviation in that, that would impact the number of, of open enrolled kids that we would take in from a capacity planning at certain grade levels, just to make sure we weren't, you know, going into that bubble period of, of when we end up with more kids coming in, and we have front-loaded kindergarten with open enrollment, et cetera, because that seems to be where we get most of the kids. Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't, I, well, the only thing, like, if you go to the slide that says district grade level fall 2019.
Yeah, but that's one year. When you have that, that grade that looks like it's above the, above the orange line moving into the next grade.
Like the seventh grade, you mean?
That's what I'm talking about, the bubble. When we get those big impacts, we have to...
They come in at like sixth grade. I mean, we know that. I, I guess from the primary, I don't see that on a normal basis. I mean, they're fairly consistent.
No, actually, I put in all of our numbers, and we actually see that growth very clearly, starting with second and third grade, where we see an increase, but we don't see an increase in open enrollment as much.
Okay.
And that goes all the way back to 2011. I mean, that's been pretty consistent. And, and you guys even said it, you said that, you know, we, we do get those kids in at a certain time. So, again, setting that, that limit by grade level, I think is very, very important, not just putting a statement out there saying unlimited.
No, I agree.
Because we may never meet that capacity.
Well, yeah, and here's, I guess this question, I'd like to answer this question. So we've had 75, and 1% for...
Three years?
Three years? And I know we did 75 every year, but the 1% at each grade level, which is technically seven kids, eight kids?
Right.
Do we still have openings for them yet? So we haven't even gotten seven kids at some of these, at some of these age levels.
That's correct.
Quite a few, which, are we going to refill in anything, like sixth, ninth grade?
I will have to look at that. We are full at ninth grade, I know that.
But it's not more than two or three of the levels.
Right.
So for first grade, second, we still have openings, and we've only, we're going to let in seven kids. Okay, go ahead.
Julie and Jeff, you guys have both said at the last couple of meetings, our district is growing. We know that, we've seen it again tonight. Julie, if you can remind us the approximate dollar value that we receive from a student that comes from outside of our district?
It's the same dollar value as it is for any dis, any student. Doesn't matter if they're our student, if they're a resident of Prior Lake and Savage, or they're an open-enrolled student. The district receives the same amount of money for...
Which is about four, five grand.
Well, it's the $10,000, if you take all our expenditures in the general fund, and you divide it out, it's $10,634. So...
From 1718.
Right.
But the cost of the total bill for educating the students?
It's the $10,005, if you look at the next one, the $10,536. And that was 1718, you know, so I has that number. But our cost for educating per student hasn't changed a whole lot. I think if I go back to our audit, you know, we're still one of the lowest in the state compared to everybody else in what we educate our students for.
Okay. And then, when that money comes in, you can put it into the general fund?
It's by whatever the requirements are for the money, yes.
Whatever the requirements are, right. So, when a student, and we have now one in eight students that are coming in from outside of our district currently, and now, this is the first time, I think, that the community has seen the unlimited request to have unlimited number of students coming in. I think that was no limitations on the open enrollment. So, when that, when that student comes in, they're not paying for the buildings though. That's the taxpayer, putting, putting the full bill, right? So, there, there's a gap there, and our, I know that our community supported us with the referendum, because we said we're full, we're busted out of our ridges, and we need to have more space. But without closing the gates...
Two more.
We still have that gap, so we continue to have that gap with the one in eight students right now, if they're open enrolled, and this unlimited amount that might come in next year. We don't know how many that might be. I mean, it might blow the roof off if we don't have any kind of limit. So I do agree with Mary, that we should have some sort of, we should have some sort of a limit.
Yes.
We're just, we're recommending unlimited based on capacity. But you have to also remember that there's a contingency of students that are going out of the district that the taxpayers are not.
I understand that, if I can continue my point. So, we just had, just a few months ago, we told hundreds of families, and that they had to move from their neighborhood school, because we're crowded, we passed a referendum, we've got to put everybody where they're supposed, you know, even people that don't have kids in elementary school right now, that are going to have to move across town with their kid, people that, that own a home in those areas. And everybody was sitting back, crossing their fingers that their neighborhood wasn't going to get picked to move, but several people, several hundreds of families are having to move their kids. What do you say to them and the, and the resident who, when they sell their home, it has to say that they're not going to get a neighborhood school, and now we're going to backfill with unlimited number of open enrolled people into those seats? Those are some of the questions that I'm getting as a board member right now.
So a couple of things, so a couple of things, and I 100% understand those questions. So a couple of things to think about. And again, that's why we brought forward a recommendation for your consideration. Three years ago, we limited, we had short-term recommendations to limit and be pretty tight on open enrollment, because we didn't have space. We have space now. One of the things that we really want to think about is the efficiency with which we run our buildings. I think that that's one thing our community would expect from us, is to be fiscally responsible. So, to make sure that we are filling our buildings, if we've got space, at a level that makes sense, to make sure we're running them as efficiently as possible. The second thing that I talked about with the boundaries is, we planned those boundaries based on resident growth, and we've seen that capacity, wanting to be sure we, we are opening a new building and moving Loa de Lago to an existing building, we had to do some changing of boundaries. That was just as, as we knew when we passed that referendum in 2017, we would have to do that.
Understandable.
So, our goal in the process that we used last spring was to ensure that we set boundaries so that we wouldn't have to do the process again, and could have stability for resident growth for the next six, seven, eight years.
Do you realize what some have said is going to be a total outcry, when we've got unlimited number of people that could fill Jeffers Pond, and you just moved a bunch of families out of there? Is that equitable, is the question?
Well, the board doesn't have to vote, we just gave a recommendation.
The board will...
The board will decide.
Right, and I'm not for it either.
We're looking for, as we looked at, as we looked at our budget, our finances, and again, I go back to three years ago, we had space, and we allowed open enrolled students in.
Three years ago, we didn't have space.
Four years ago.
That vote changed from zero to a month later, allowing 75 people in. We had it down to zero three years ago, so not a single new person could come in. Thirty days later, we get a new board, and then it went to, to set, open to 75.
Yep, that was a decision that...
We had no space back then.
Well, I mean, it's been tight, but you realize what happens. It's a balancing, and that's, I think, the conversation we had at the last study session, was this needs to be a combination. This needs to be a combination of, we need to look at our finances, we need to look at things we don't need. We need to cut things.
Right, and we need to be looking at other ways for revenue, other than opening up the gates.
Yeah, and I don't think any, I mean, we haven't all talked yet. This is just a recommendation, so it's been through two. So, we're not through it yet, and I'm not on open the gates either, so there's three of us.
My thoughts are, in researching this, is that, first of all, Mary, you were talking about class size, I just want to make sure I understand, you're saying we'll have larger class size if we open, open enrollment, or?
No, I'm saying there's an ideal.
Okay, right.
And if we go with the ideal class size that'll maximize educational outcomes, we're going to be, our budget's going to suffer.
Yeah, we can't afford it.
Okay, so we, we don't want to move the ideal, we want to keep our eye on the prize, but understand the consequences, pros and cons, if we increase class sizes. But also, you know, there's, first of all, population doesn't just keep going up, 250 kids, 100 kids, or whatever. I mean, none of our demographic reports say we're going to have a linear growth model.
Right.
If we don't have that capacity plan...
Yep.
And understand the exception that we're going to do, I mean, we can't effectively budget or plan for educational outcomes, so we need to, we need to do both.
Sure. That makes sense to me. I'm not saying unlimited, like let's fill every seat, but the couple of points I wanted to make as we're talking about it, is that, first of all, I think there's some confusion that the cost it takes to educate a student versus the money that comes in with the state is not a direct dollar-for-dollar. There are efficiencies built into open enrollment, so in other words, we have classrooms with open seats in them, and it costs us just the same to run that building without those seats filled as it does with those seats filled. With those kids come the money. I, I mean, I researched all of this, this is true.
But we don't get the same amount.
So, what I'm saying is, if we say, if a student comes in, we aren't paying extra to heat for that student. We're actually, it's like flying an airplane. If your airplane is three-quarters full, and a quarter of it is empty, it costs the same fuel and everything else. So, you do better financially if you sell those extra tickets. I'm not trying to equate students to tickets, but what I'm saying is, part of the goal of open enrollment is an efficient operating system, also with class size. If you have two larger kindergarten classes, and you open enroll some students with that extra funding, you can now have three smaller classes. Does that make sense? So your efficiency does that. Also, the money that comes in benefits our district students with the quality of programming that we can offer and the variety to meet all of our student needs. Most of the districts in the area are, well, some of them are advertising for open enrollment, because the greatest thing that affects a school district going down is declining enrollment. It's the first thing that'll take them down financially. because the greatest thing that affects a school district going down is declining enrollment. It's the first thing that'll take them down financially.
But we're not declining.
I know, but we have, we built capacity with our referendum to get us to a certain point years down the road. In the meantime, we have open seats and a budget shortfall. And it's, we bring those people in, it helps with our budget, and those seats can still be open for our resident growth down the road by managing how we're doing it. Why not?
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, keep going. Okay. And I also think that there's a fiscal responsibility we have to look at, not only the making of, but districts who manage their open enrollment will go back less frequently for operating referendums to their resident, to their taxpayers. So you can say, oh, it's gonna cost us more in taxes per student, but the truth is, we're not gonna have to come back because we can't meet our budget needs and come back to the community. So I think it's just a little misleading and confusing when we talk about open enrollment without talking about the efficiencies that are built in. And Prior Lake's no different than any other district who is dealing with this. It's the same story anywhere in Minnesota. So I just, I think I wanna be really clear, especially when we're talking to the public, on how this, how this works.
Quick question before I start. Jeff, the models that you were building, when we were going through referendum planning and everything else, we were talking about ideal usage, we were talking about capacities. Are, are those numbers based on sort of our target eighty-five percent capacity numbers or those are maximums?
Yeah, the percentage of, the eighty-five percent capacity is at secondary level. Elementary is a straight classroom usage.
That's right.
And our capacities are based on a straight twenty-three student average.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Boy, I mean, this is, this is our second, this is our second big challenge, right? The first one this year was figuring out where everybody's gonna go to school. And this one's gonna be a conversation about open enrollment and the reality is.
We do this every November. Every November.
I understand. And, and the reality is that it isn't simple. What, what, to me, I guess, I'll only spoke, speak from my own perspective. There's a difference in the marginal cost and the marginal revenues, just a simple economic concept, right? If you have a factory and you're building stuff, what's the marginal cost of throwing one more off the assembly line? This is not equating students again to production and widgets, okay?
It's like throwing one off the assembly line.
But it's, it's, it's an analogy. And so, as Michael was talking about, if you have empty seats, the marginal revenue that comes from filling that seat is going to help you manage fiscally proper use of your resources and it is going to help you balance a budget. At the same time, I do think that we need to continue to flesh through a thoughtful, long-term capacity analysis because I think getting an idea of where are those spots where we do see increases along the way are helpful to analyze and know what numbers we should be allowing. My heart would like to say, we have space, come on in. My brain and my pocketbook say, we need to be smart and we have people who have elected us to make good choices. And so is the right answer unlimited? I'm not so sure. Is the right answer keeping the doors closed? I'm confident to me that that is not the right answer. And so I, I, I'm not, we're in a study session, we're not here to have a decision today. For me, this is provocative. This is something that needs study and needs thought. And I'll wrestle with this for the next, until we have made a decision. And I'll probably be back in and out of your office lots of times.
Could we define?
Sort it out.
Yeah. Okay, so you wanna define unlimited? You mean unlimited at every grade?
It's, it was a starting point for us to start.
No limitations.
No limitations.
I guess I said I have no limitations.
Right, right.
It's not all or nothing.
Yeah, it's no limitations. So I, I mean, I think to kinda get us, try, so to get some type of outcome for tonight, to give me direction as to which to go. I think, you know, are we talking, I mean, I don't, I mean, are cuts on the table for people? I, I mean, for me, they are. I think whatever, you know, is to go through that process, I, I do think that that has to be something that we look at.
I think what I'm gathering is, I have, I have not heard anyone really have a lot of perspective or share anything contrary, but restore teaching, teacher to student class ratios is gonna require adjustment, in particular if we're gonna restore them to their intended amount. And so where, where we didn't have students arise, there would be an adjustment there, we'd be reducing. But certainly every year, and I know Julie, you've mentioned this, in our organization as large as we do have students that retire, or excuse me, we do have, we do have staff who do retire, we do have staff that leave the district for other opportunities. Natural, yeah, and so.
I mean, I, I guess for me, I, I get that and I think that is part of our normal process. I'm actually asking for something deeper.
Okay.
To be honest. I think, you know, we haven't had a chance, when I first got on the board, we were at the end of a seven-year cut cycle, which makes you, things run very lean and, not that we don't, because we do see that we are a pretty lean machine as far as educating students. But I think with the amount of stuff that's gone on and the growth that's gone on, I think taking a deeper dive into looking at, you know, I'm not saying specific programs, I'm just saying take a deeper dive, let's look at people's budgets, let's look at supply budgets, let's look at, let's look at stuff. Is there stuff we're doing now that we don't, it doesn't mean our mission any longer?
I thought we were asking about that, or talked about that after the last study session, looking at a couple of different.
I, yeah, I mean, that, I mean, I'm looking at for a deeper dive. I mean, and I guess I'm.
I thought we were looking for that.
Well, I'm putting words to it to make sure it happens, I guess. So I don't know how everyone else feels, but I do think that that is something that we need to do. I do think it's a combination. I also am not for no limitations. I don't think, you know, I, I guess we have to figure out what this is. Is this a one-year blip? Is this a, this is gonna happen for a while? And yes, we don't grow two hundred and fifty students every year. I mean, that was an average over a twenty-year cycle of what we were on it, is what that's based on. And so there has been, you know, there was the recession years. I got on the board right after that. I think we grew forty kids. I mean, it wasn't much. So I do think it's a combination of looking at places where we can save money and doing something with open enrollment. But I don't think opening about, now, I do make the point and ask the question of, okay, we've been pretty scarce with open enrollment over the last three years. And especially at the age of our grades, one through twelve, we haven't even gotten six kids. So that's, it's not like people are clamoring at the door. So, I mean, I think people do have to keep in mind that if you think that four hundred kids are all of a sudden gonna show up, that might not happen. Because they haven't been coming to fill the six spots, so why would they come and fill a hundred? So, and, and there's been a pretty mess, a pretty strong message from us here that it's closed, you know, it's pretty tight. So the idea to get people to come back may take a little bit too. So I think that's something else that we have to be prepared for. I do think that, number one, on your recommendations for the budget enrollment pyramid, to stay within the fund balance of eight to twelve percent is part of our policy. I do think that that sets our district on solid footing. So when we're looking at this combination of change of whatever it should be, I think we need to keep that in mind too, as to where your chart was falling off the bottom here at whatever, two to twenty. We need to make sure that we keep that policy within. And so whatever combination of that, that keeps us on more solid grounds and kinda lowers that dip, we need to look at that too. So I think for me, that's a, a place to where you wanna somewhat end up is more solid ground, is, is putting it, whether it's cuts and a little, and an increase in some type of open enrollment or whatever the combination is. So that's where I'm at. I don't know how much specifics you need from us. I guess if, if there's more comments to be made, but that's where I'm at. I don't, you know, as far as approval, I know we're doing the current year's budget and this we're talking about for the following year's budget. I mean, this is, we're, we're, we're not talking about the budget that we have to improve in December.
That is correct.
Right, so when people see that, we wanna make sure that we're talking about the budget in the future. The main thing, the crucial thing right now to decide is the open enrollment number because of timing.
So I, I just have a, oh, go ahead, Dr.
No, you sound as a first.
I just wanna clarify too, that if we, if we don't do unlimited, we can also go by grade level, correct? So I've seen other districts will say, this is what our percentage is available in second grade, this is what it is in third. That allows us to manage, but also work on our capacity and efficiencies. Which again, I just wanna reiterate, allows us to offer a greater variety of programs for all of our learners. The more attractive we, as we build up our reputation, some websites in the district websites have these big welcome pages attracting open enrolled students. Here's what we've got to offer you. They spend money on billboards to get them there. So we're not even talking about that, but we do send out a message. And it's good for our property values and the community to be a destination district. And I think if you're comfortable with that.
So I just wanna, I just want to say, for the record, for the whole room, when we talked about the unlimited, I just want you to know, you know, our conversations were, number one, we do have space now, and number two, we certainly would do that while monitoring. I mean, I think to Stacy's point, you know, there's, there's, I don't think any of us believe that overnight we're gonna have four hundred kids in, nor. We have to say yes to that, right? We, we get to still determine how many we accept. We might have a lot that apply and we can still determine that. So I just, I just want you to know, maybe that wasn't the best wording, but, but our recommendation is, we don't, we, we have space right now, just like we did prior to the last three years and there were not limits, except at the high school, there weren't limits to open enrollment at that point. So that's really why we came back to this, for this conversation, so.
So first of all, I, what's important for me and what has been important for me is that we do set the capacity limit, both the ideal and what we need budget-wise, so we understand the differences at per grade level. I think, you know, the past is the past, but I have been asking this for years. So that is really important. It's important for planning, it's important for budgeting, et cetera. Because I don't wanna see us getting into a situation like we've been in before, that kinda led up to this. Second of all, is far, I, I do agree with Stacy with regards to, we need to look at all options. Cutting is definitely part of it. But, you know, the, the analogies and stuff like that, you know, we've, we've gotta get down to the meat and the substance of this because we're gonna have to be making some really hard decisions and the, and the whole, you know, extra space and all that kinda stuff and extra programs. That is, it's, it's somewhat propagandish and it's not exactly substantive according to how open enrollment is supposed to work. And it's not really open enrollment, it's all about capacity planning. What brings people to this district are our, are high educational outcomes, period. And when we get into situations where we're overcrowding or underfunding or whatever, you affect educational outcomes and those two have got to be balanced. And we're, I don't, in, in the demographic reports have been pretty darned clear, we're not going to grow at the two hundred and fifty level. I mean, there's, there's not one district that I've paid attention to and I know that there were comments and I sent in emails and stuff like that about how other districts were growing, they're, they're not. Everyone is anticipating that flat and downturn and we need to plan ahead and plan strategically for that. So we do balance the two between the financial needs and the educational outcomes, which means that we can't just look at, we've gotta look at the numbers by classroom, but we have to actually understand the net impact going forward and plan accordingly. And I would much rather be pleasantly surprised than unpleasantly surprised going forward. So if, if we can't get that difference where the ideal class size is there by grade level and then understand that delta pro and con going forward, that's all I'm really asking for and then we can make the decisions going forward. The other thing that we need to make sure of is that we also serve the, the people that are in the district. Because we've got a lot of people who really went to bat for the district in the past two to three years. We don't wanna see those educational outcomes for those people that did that. We don't wanna see them suffer. And, 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 and I, I wanna make that the highest priority too, because it's one thing to say that we may not see the enrollment go the way we want it to go or the way we need it to go for budget, it's gonna be another if we see we're losing people. And that's not, that's, that's gonna, that's something that was actually almost a hundred percent within our control based upon how we handle this. So if, if, and I wanna keep that in mind.
The actual impact of playing in the open enrollment pool, if you will, because again, that's a, it's a revenue lever that's designed for districts, as we've talked before, that are decreasing. And I know that you'll say, you'll say differently on that, Julie, but that's why you have Minnetoka and Wazetta and Burnsville, because they, they're losing kids, okay? We're not. We're not in that, in that environment at all. And it takes all of this to educate the kid, okay, the student. But when we get that kid that's coming in here from outside of our district, they're only paying this much. This is the buildings and everything else that it takes. We fall behind. And if we continue to, continue to keep the gates open, right now, like I said, one in eight students, we're not getting the full, the full monte for them. And our community is saying they've had it. And, and it's not, it's not the whole malarkey about programs and so on, it's real common sense. We don't get paid as much as we should for that. And we're growing. We've got land all over the place and if they wanna be in this district, they need to move here. That's how you get in the district, if you want the programs. You don't rely on being in Burnsville or Shakopee or wherever else to get in here. We're full. And our number one priority, our, our community has told us, is the people that are residents right now are already open enrollment, the people we call Lakers. They're our priority. And we have to make adjustments. I'm a hundred percent behind Stacy on that. We should see what five percent reduction and everything across the board would look like.
So I just wanna follow up. I, I am also for looking at the budget, absolutely. I do wanna be careful, I don't think it's fair to say that that open enrollment doesn't bring efficiencies or that that's propaganda. I also did research. And then also the cost is not always a case of, they bring in this amount of money, but we pay this much extra because we're not looking at how the complicated areas of school finance and how that works. We are flying with a plane partly full. We built for the referendum so that as our district resident growth comes, that ten years down the road, we have that space. Until we're at that place, if all that resident growth comes, we have open classrooms. And in terms of test scores and everything else, the research tends to show that if you have the money coming in to offer paraprofessional services, social, emotional counseling, programs that hit your gifted and talented and, and your special add, that you do better for those students. And so I just, I just wanna be careful about using that word propaganda because I have my sheets and numbers and percentages too and there are reasons that Minnesota schools are using open enrollment to make their schools better when there is capacity, but I'm all for limiting it. I just wanna be really careful about this, us and them, and if we have open seats, we still have to just take care of our Lakers. When we have open seats, there's, we can welcome more Lakers.
We're responsible for Lakers.
I understand that.
We're responsible for all students. I don't wanna make a distinction between the two and I don't think it's fair because once they come in there.
No, when I say, when I say Lakers, I mean the people that are here right now today.
Right, but how does having open seats?
Who's the ones are responsible for?
I'm just kidding. How does having open seats? Uh, we actually, the research shows your resident students have more opportunities when you have the income that comes in with open enrolled students.
Okay, you can keep our analysis, but go on.
Well, you know, it's a spirited debate, right? I mean, it's a good thing. It's a good thing to have that discussion at this table. We are going to have differences of opinion. I, I would like all of us to be careful with the words that we choose because words have power. And they do have an impact on how people are perceived and how our ideas are perceived. I'm an analogy guy. It's just kinda how I try to operate. The original, yeah, open enrollment, open enrollment, yes, it's a lever for districts to utilize, but open enrollment in Minnesota is our version of school choice. Open enrollment, the purpose of open enrollment was for families and for students. And I think we should keep that in mind. That is part of our system. If, if we would like to eliminate that from having to be part of our discussion on the annual basis, add it to our legislative agenda, that we'd like to see that changed. I have no interest in that. I'm just, I, I think we should attempt to try to keep this to a conversation about good, good fiscal decisions and try to be respectful of what. and try to be respectful of one another's perspectives, because we're all here trying to solve the same challenge together. And I think we can work together and come up. Everything, and what I hear all the way around the table is, everything's on the table.
So I throw out a number, does anybody else have, check on the five percent deal? I mean, I, I think I'd leave that to them to come up with some...
So we'll, just to try to rat, try to...
Yeah, let's...
You know, staying within fund balance policy, but also a combination of reductions and looking at revenues. There's not consensus around no limitations. Not unlimited, but you want limitations, now.
I would say there's consensus on limitations.
Consensus, is, is, is it the same set? Do you want us to bill, bring back a budget built on the same seventy-five and one percent? Or would you like us to move a little bit off that?
Okay, do you get, what, any ideas around that?
Well, sort of. I, I think it was somebody, I think it was Stacy, who just said it would be, it would be helpful to have an idea of roughly the number of open enrolled students, assuming they choose to come, that would get the numbers in line. So where, where is that number? And then, as a board, we can have a conversation about, are we comfortable?
I, I don't know if we can focus it, I think we have to focus it on total enrollment.
Right, right.
Yes.
So I mean, with, if we're looking at a hundred and twenty-five students, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, a hundred and twenty-five students is total grown resident, including open enrolled students?
Allow me, allow me to rephrase that. I'm not looking, I'm not looking for one hundred and sixty-three open enrolled students.
God, thank you.
I, I, I think it's a total, what's the enrollment number, enrollment overall, that would have our revenues be, as a starting point for an analysis, to me, it would be, here's where our expenditures are headed, here's the number of students we would need to be able to support that, and here's, you know, and we, we have the figures for what we think we have for residents. It allows us to just kind of get an idea. I don't think that's the, the end of the conversation, I think that's the beginning of the conversation.
I'd like to see a chart where it shows closing the gates, zero. Just allowing internal growth to support just our residents. And existing open enrolled folks.
So zero growth?
No, zero open enrolled, zero folks from outside of our community that are not residents.
So that would be less than the hundred and twenty-five, how would we, how would that be calc, Julie?
I think there's a lot of questions with that, because we have families with younger siblings that are open enrolled into our district with, that have preschoolers, so are they eliminated? Then I think that changes things, too, for us, because most likely they want their children all to be in one district. So I think you'd have to give us some information about that. As well as then, we would have to really look at, what is our eighty-five percent?
Marketer.
Marketer, based on what's happening in our community. Now, when we did our last demographic study, there, a lot of things have changed since then. We know in the, in what the paper says, that the city of Prior Lake is looking at limiting more the growth, so that will have an effect on our district as well. And so I think some of those decisions, we have to be a little flexible with, because of what's happening in our communities, both Prior Lake and Savage, based around those decisions that have been affect the number of students that could be coming into our district as well.
So, question on that. So, I'm just thinking the process, because normally, you know, we come up this time of year and make the vote, and we're done, and come back in another year after we've been updated. Is there anything within the processes, because I have concerns about that, like what you said about, I don't know where the cities at exactly with that decision.
They have a meeting.
They can't make the decision. And then there's all of Savage, too.
And by the way, they, they can't, there's certain things they can't do to limit growth. But what they have done is declared to the Met Council, and they did it even before our last boundary vote, about what was gonna happen, I didn't know about that, but they did say, because the Met Council requires a certain amount or percentage of land to be one hundred percent commercial, and now they're adding in the, the fifty-five and older, or senior housing and stuff like that, so. Unfortunately, we didn't have those numbers beforehand, but now we know that, you know, there's certain properties that we were discussing and considering that are no longer open for development.
Well, and I, I mean, I think if there is some fundamental change from what we, you know, of the way they're approaching it, you know, if they're gonna say, hey, you're not welcome here, I mean, that's gonna obviously affect what we've got going on, in the short term at least. So I mean, that, that would be a factor for me, too, I guess. I don't, I just heard that they're considering it, but I don't...
We do have a process, just so that everyone's...
My point was on this, was, is there a way as to which, you know, say we set the number, whatever it is, and is there a way you can come back sooner, like that we could tweak, or not tweak, or?
Yeah, we can do it.
We can limit, you can still limit before, I mean, can we set and then reset, or no? You have a...
You still have to do that, and a month later, and then it changes.
But I'm, I'm talking about like after the application, so we can see what's happening, and things are going on.
That's where I was going with the process.
That's where I was going with the process.
We have a process where we have everyone, for especially kindergarten, has, has to apply by a certain time. And then once they apply, they go on a waiting list, and they have the lottery. And you could set a process where you say, we are allowing open enrollment, and once we find what that, you know, and have people apply, and look at your applications, and see how many have applied, and where you have space, and then accept based on where you feel comfortable doing that.
So you mean, you can have the application process and have it, and then you could come back to us, and you could say, okay, well, there's like a hundred and fifty, so I'm just drawing it on the...
Yeah, you're right.
Like, there's a hundred and fifty, and we say, okay, we're comfortable with that, now we're done.
That is the process with most other school districts. They open up the applications, the board sets the limit, sometimes much earlier, they set a capacity plan per grade, and then they look at the applications on the first come, first served, the waitlist goes in the lottery. Normally, you have a deadline for the applications to come in, so the, so if the board wants to extend sizes, they can do that at that time. But you gotta be careful. If you tell somebody no, and then you go and you open it up, that's...
They may, they may go, yeah.
Well, no, that's also a legal issue.
Oh, okay.
So you gotta be careful about that. That's why they usually set the deadline for the applications. The board sets a capacity, and based upon what's going on with, with the projected in district, et cetera, and the capacity per grade level, then they can make the modification. But you can't do a yo-yo after...
Right, yeah. You could say, we'll accept, and I'm making this up, so...
But you're looking at, there's no limits, yes.
Well, right, and so you could say, we're going to accept X percentage each grade level in grade six through twelve, and because those two will be outgoing out of our district much sooner than students in K five. And you could set a different number in K five, if that's what you chose to do. You could continue with your seventy-five at the kindergarten level, and then make a decision. We could come back to you and say, these are the, these are the number of applicants we have in each of these grade levels. It fits into our capacity planning, and would you like to accept that, or?
Okay, so can, I'm gonna go back to the capacity, is that okay? Can I go back to the capacity? So out of these two models, you know, are you, and I know you said there's not, there's not a preferred, but are you asking us, like, do we prefer one of these models? Is that what you're asking us?
Maybe, it's just how, we staff according to model B. And that's how we staff.
That's more closely aligned to how we staff.
Okay.
And both models, both models show we have space.
Right. But one is twenty-three students, that's everywhere, right? That's K through five.
Correct.
Where I don't necessarily want to have twenty-three kids in here or anything else. But I probably want more than twenty-five and a fifty-three.
Both models show we have space, and we haven't even opened up the new elementary school?
No, this is...
No, that's with the new elementary school.
That's why I said what I'd like to do is do an ideal, but then understand that due to budget, we may have to go beyond the ideal, but, but still state that if we, if we get, if we get the funding, we'd like to go back down to the, to, yeah, more ideal class size, but I mean, that's not, unfortunately, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not in that situation with the budget, but we, we at least need to set those baselines down. And then once you get the class size and the, the standard that you want, and then also add in a percentage leeway, or something like that, for those classes that we're gonna bulge in because of in-district migration, then I think we've got a good model that we can go by, and we won't have to go through this each time, except if we have more budget cuts, or budget surprises, or something like that, but that's, that's where I'd like to be.
Because you're saying we, we, we need that capacity, so we do open enrollment to that capacity, or no, don't have open enrollment, based on grade level.
Right, basically, because, because that also allows us the, is, first of all, it's the, it's the legal standard. Second of all, if we ever have to close it, we have it pre-established, you know? And, and, and by the way, the plan is to go, because you know that fourth is one of a fifth, fifth is one of a sixth, to set those capacity limits, then you can make adjustments well in advance. That's, that's, that's what I'm used to seeing in other areas, and, and, yeah, the, the application process also helps you understand where you're gonna be a lot sooner in the district.
Right. Okay, what else do you need from us for different areas?
I mean, I...
Do you want us to get into more detail about...
Are we gonna request, or they would recommend personal cuts?
Well, I think I'm gonna go to them to say, what's this combination of, you know, to get us down to fund balance, I'm assuming, or?
Well, that's what we'll, that's what ultimately we are going to be asking. If we set the, the students at one hundred and twenty-five, or whatever that number is, we know that some of those will be resident, will be offsetting the rest by open enrollments. And then with that, as we look at the fund balance with that number, we'll say, okay, that means a two million dollar reduction, or whatever that would be.
I want it by grade level, for instance, at a one twenty-five, oh, and...
I'm just throwing the number out.
What does that look like to you, Mary, when you say by grade level? Because we don't, we don't have a consistent grade level enrollment coming into our district. And so if you, you know, that's what makes it difficult. So when you say, what does that look like to you, when you say that?
It looks like just exactly what you put up, when you said twenty-three, or twenty-eight, or twenty-five kids, or whatever. You know approximately how many first grade, second grade, you can always make the second grade or first grade, and vice versa. But you gotta have that baseline. And if you, if you know how many you're gonna get by grade level, you can also go out and decide on your applications for open enrollment a lot easier, as well as planning cohort going forward.
So then that would be, you're, what you're saying is putting something more along the line, capacity B, as our, as the model. Our twenty-one students...
Yes, twenty-one, twenty.
Twenty-one at K one, twenty-three at two, three, and twenty-eight at four, five. That would be, that would be your...
That would be a, a sample of it. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm also of the mind of having the larger, you know, kindergarten, and going up to twenty-eight and those things. That's, wouldn't be ideal class size, but if that's what we need to do to, to get the budget, then that's what we do. But I just, I would like to hear the board say that we know that the larger class sizes, particularly at elementary, is going to potentially impact educational outcomes. And we just need to understand that we're taking that...
Risk, or...
That risk, or that, that trade-off, in order to make sure we can get the budget we need. I, I don't want large class size to end up being the norm in order for us to break even. I want the public to understand the impact of that, and the impact of lack of funding.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I, I like model B, I mean, just because I think that's kind of how we've operated, for the most part. So those levels, to me, is seen, you know, a good thing to base, if we're gonna base that capacity. For the grades higher, six through twelve, as far as the open enrollment discussion. You know, there, I'm a little, uh...
You can't do it on class size.
No, but I'm a little bit more apt to be a little, I don't want to say open, I mean, more flexible, because there is a shorter period of time that they're with us. You know, we have had, even over the years, when things were really tight, we still allowed at ninth grade, you know, twenty, thirty kids. There's a lot of fluctuation, you know, with kids going in and out in those grades, you know, going over to bridges, going over to mincaps, I mean, so there is a lot of, there's a lot of... Yeah, so I think, in, in my mind, those older grades, there is, in my mind, there's more flexibility there, as far as, because I don't think the kids are there all day long, I mean, there's kids that are only there for two hours a day, there's kids that won't start their day till eleven o'clock. So I do think we have a little bit more flexibility, in my opinion, there. So to have some type of, I don't know what this recommendation for open enrollment would look like, but I'm just saying, I, I think there's a recognized difference with the older grades than there is with the younger ones. That's just, that's my opinion. And they're not gonna, if, if it, if this is like a two or a three-year thing, where we're not gonna get the kids, they're gonna get through the cycle and help us through that. So I, I see that being a positive, at least for a short-term type thing. So I would have more flexibility there. I don't know, it sounds like the board would feel that way, too, yes.
I agree with that, but I do think at some point in time, we're gonna have to say, we want, you know, so many total middle school, that's our capacity, that's what we're aiming for, you know, so many total at ninth, tenth, like, even though they're gonna go back and forth between classrooms, you're gonna have ninth graders taking tenth grade classes, you're gonna have twelfth graders taking, you know, whatever, it doesn't make any difference. But at least so you have a baseline to go after. I don't, I don't want to continue this, I don't want to, I don't want to see the word limitless in there either, or unregulated, or whatever we want to name it. I just, you know, we know there's gonna be more volatility, that's fine. Still, we need to know what our goal is budget-wise, and our goal with ideal capacity, so we're not basically creating a crowded lunchroom again, and stuff like that. We, we want to make sure we know the flexibility they like, we'd like to see, and the maximum capacity for budget.
Well, we have our capacities by middle schools and by high school.
But is that maximum capacity for the school itself, or is that at the...
Capacities are always set by the average number of students that you factor in per class. It's not a fire code...
So it's not a grade.
It's not a fire, that's what I was asking.
Right, it's not a fire code type of component, so, I mean, you increase class sizes, you increase capacities. You know, and I guess therein where I think you're saying, you know, that's not ideal when you're increasing class sizes, because you have to, because either you don't have space, or you have to, from a budgetary standpoint, so.
Okay.
I think we have what we need.
Do you?
I think that's remarkable.
Well, you know, it... I think we're looking at a combination of reductions revenue. We're looking at the hundred and twenty-five students, which does, which will present what we need to do to stay within an eight to twelve percent fund balance, in terms of reductions.
That's the parameter, so that, to get to the eight to twelve, it's either gonna be this much cut, or this much open enrollment, or a combination of, but that's where we're gonna have the parameters.
And then I think we can also put a component in there, too, maybe of, you know, a suggestion for K five. You know, a limit to open enrollment, and then perhaps a little bit less, uh, press, maybe a little bit more, a little bit more liberal at the six, twelve level, relative to the capacities that we've established.
And then, just so we get it down, like, on print, if you could have, like, that process that someone, Mary was talking about, about the open enrolled, and looking at it, and, you know, where we would come back, you know, and look at. So if we're gonna do this...
Timing process.
Timing process, so guess what, our applications are due, like, February, what, I don't, making it up.
No, that's exactly it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and then you're gonna come back to us in March and report where it is, or whatever. So that we get that timeline, too, so we can get concrete on the decisions. Is that pretty good, Greg?
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, I think, is...
Next up, Dr. Shuttner is here to update us a little bit on our American Indian education.
Pasha, good evening, board members. I have an update on our American Indian education program, and the letter of non-concurrence from our American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. This letter was technically due to the district in the NDE back in March for the PAC, didn't quite, wasn't able to meet that deadline, and they submitted it to us in mid-October. So what you'll see in front of you is both the, or in the packet, is both the letter to the board, and our district response. Some similarities to last year, and some of the, the six points that they brought up are really similar to last year. We have some big changes and updates to our programming, and a lot of what you'll see represented in this letter really represents issues from last year, and maybe prior years. One of the biggest changes that we've made to programming is, we have a new coordinator, Karina Lyons, and she is off to a really fantastic start in the district, connecting with teachers, kids, parents, just really doing some great work. The members of the PAC were involved in the search committee, and the hiring committee for Karina, and... And so they're really, really strong supporters of her and her work and everything she's doing with kids so far. So with that, I'll just kind of walk through the six points. If there's any questions, please feel free to ask. The first statement the PAC made was that they would like to have a fully funded and supported position for the American Indian Education Coordinator through the General Fund. And it sounds like that's not, that's not a part of our current situation, nor do we have any means to make that happen in the near future. To give you some background, we braid three different funding sources for this position now. We use state, American Indian Education Ed funds, federal funds through Title VII, and quite a sizable chunk from our achievement and integration funding. And we've done that systematically over the years to increase time and programming for the position to be able to make more supports available. So Karina, as I said, is, she's full-time, follows the student's schedule and really is available to students, parents and teachers kind of at all hours of the day. She's highly in demand right now to, to do things like meet with curriculum review committees, work with teachers individually in their classes. She helped with a wild rice lesson and a fax class the other day at the high school. She's reviewing books for teachers to see if there's any cultural bias inherent in that text. A wide variety of things, connecting with students before and after the school day, taking some of our, our students to a native horse camp nearby to kind of build some, some community and connection for our kids. So really doing some really, really great things. And we were able to support that through those three funding sources you see there. Statement two is about providing opportunities for the PAC to provide structured input. And that's something we've made some big strides with over the last year, year and a half as well. Our American Indian Education PAC actually met and presented to our social studies curriculum review committee. And really, it was about the experience of having native students in the district and experiencing social studies education in the district. And it was, it was eye-opening for many of our teachers and, and just in terms of how some narratives are presented. And so our social studies teachers, to their incredible credit, have really taken that to heart and are really working to include more absent narratives in their curriculum and their planning. And that's work we'll continue this year into the future. In addition, Karina is present at all of the other relevant curriculum review meetings, whether it's ELA or SCIENCE. She also works really closely with our district naturalist, Simone, for curricular connections. And Sarah Wheelock, who is now the new chair of the PAC. Anthony Statham is no longer the chair, but Sarah Wheelock is the new chair. She sits in our Curriculum Advisory Committee, DCAC. So, statement three was about requiring the district administrator to attend PAC meetings. And what we've done for the last two, nearly two and a half years, is I meet every month with the PAC leadership. So that's Sarah, Rebecca Crook Stratton from the SMSC, as well as Karina, obviously, and some other parent members who kind of come at will. So it provides us with a really structured time to keep tight communication, to see what issues may be coming up and to make sure that we're connecting and that we're responding to issues that, that do come up in a timely manner. So we do that once a month. It's regularly scheduled and it's, it's been really good. It's been really positive and encouraging, really regular and open communication. We talk about anything that comes up. Statement four is about training for staff. And we have made some big strides with that, really to Karina's credit as well. So she has recently, just in October twenty-first, Professional Development Day, provided really an intro to the American Indian culture to over a hundred staff or over seventy staff at our high school. And she regularly meets with teams of teachers in both their learning teams, in individual classrooms, you know, in a lot of different contexts. We are looking at some ways to really broaden that reach. One of the requirements for the, for teacher realignment for next year is to have a, kind of an intro to American Indian culture. So we're going to be integrating her work into that requirement as we roll it out to all teachers. It's also a part of our broader educational equity and excellence work as well. You know, helping our staff understand how to best serve all of our students. Statement five is about regular updates. So we do that in a variety of ways. There's kind of the formal ways, through the World's Best Workforce reporting, through our skip reporting, our school continuous improvement plans. Those are all broken down by demographic areas. So both the PAC and our teachers and our, and our building administrators are aware of the achievement gaps that we know still exist and that we're working to meet. You will see some of the data from our last year's Indian Education Program Plan. We met three of the four goals that are reportable yet, or no, two of the four. We nearly met the C or better gap, decreasing the gap in C or better in Algebra I. We're working on the others and our, our graduation rate varies quite a bit because the cohort of students is quite small. So last year we were, we were at a hundred percent, but it's a, it's a pretty small cohort of students. So we're expecting good numbers there as well. And that's really due to the support of our teachers, the coordinator and our counselors. So those other regular updates occur through those monthly meetings as well, as we look at data. And statement six, the board did consider this last year, to have a regularly scheduled time at the, at school board meetings for the PAC to provide an opportunity for timely communication. And at the time, I think the board and the district's response was that all stakeholders are welcome to speak at, at the beginning of every meeting, you know. So are there any questions I can answer or comments or statements?
I just have a comment. I think you did an excellent job of response on every single point. I'm a hundred percent in agreement with entire response.
Under statement one, to bring the, the cost of Karina and the services under the General Fund, I assume they're doing this because they're afraid that if the legislature ever cuts this, then she will be gone and.
Perhaps, I think it's.
The one thing is this, the Native American liaison support is grounded in Minnesota statute. And so statute would have to change.
But it's an unfunded mandate, right?
It's funded. It is funded. I mean, when, when the district meets certain thresholds. And we're using the categorical funding to provide the support for American Indian families and students.
So if we bring her, if we bring the cost of the whole program underneath the General Fund, can we then absorb the money from the grant into the General Fund?
No.
So that's, how's this going to work?
So that, I think the intent there is that if we absorb the cost of the position, we would use the funding that we get through the state and federal grants for other programming for kids or perhaps even other personnel or.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just, I just hope that we can continue to grow the program. Then the other thing is, is when you, last time we talked about this and I like it with the, it was state with the number four under statement two. By look at the AP world history and AP US history, the pre-common core books did leave out some of the Native American issues and actual occurrences, which by the way, when kids did went to take the AP history course, they actually got wrong. The due cues did not match up, did they?
Nope.
At all.
Nope.
And that's been a problem. Do we now have the updated books in those areas? Because I, I don't, I, I don't, I'm sure McGraw-Hill produces the majority of them, so I don't know which version this is.
We haven't purchased updated materials for those yet. One of the things we're doing with our social studies committee is, you know, using some of the, you know, the perspectives they're gaining from our PAC, from other data review to say, to create a criteria for resource selection. And that inclusion of absent narratives is a part of it. And one of the things we're finding out pretty quickly as we just start the, the process of reviewing resource, resources is that no one resource is going to do everything for us. You know what I mean? We're going to have to supplement with other primary sources with, there's a Why Treaties Matter exhibit and materials from there. So there's, there's just ways to kind of jigsaw together as long as we're cognizant on the front end that the book is not going to do it all for us, you know.
Those were the primary questions that I had. Oh, I, I did have one more statement. The tribe came out and made a statement, I don't know if this is true or not, that they're now at, I think it's an eighteen percent only of their students going on to post-secondary. I don't know if that's true or not, but I know that they have a goal of bringing that amount almost to fifty percent now. Is, is that embedded in some of the stuff here that you know of, or is that a correct percentage? I don't even know if I heard that correctly.
Not a hundred percent familiar with that.
I, I think one of the things, and I want, you know, to compliment you, Kevin, because I know you've, you, a lot of, you've got a lot of fingerprints on the work with the PAC and Karina and working with, with the staff. I think some, I'll be, some of the statements that you see here are reflective of last March. And I think, you know, once we get a little farther into the year and I think, you know, looking at, you know, some of the more recent statements by the SMSC, we may see some of that come around this next spring when this is back up for consideration again. But again, I think the one thing, I know you've done a tremendous job of is really building relationships with the PAC and with students and really getting the right person in Karina here to help. And the PAC understands that and is seeing the benefits. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. Just one more add into that. Rebecca Crook Stratton is a key leader in the SMSC and she's a key leader on our PAC and an incredible partner.
I just had a question. The new facility, the education facility, have we been over there and checked it out? I mean, is that something that we can? I mean, since it's right.
We have, we, we.
Right, and I have your deal trust.
Yep.
So there have been, okay.
We've, we've taken teams of teachers, we've taken students. We're planning a more comprehensive trip with all of our students in January.
You have just won the ticket as a board member.
Oh, do I?
Yeah. Yeah, they offer free admission to all educators in MEA, I think, yep.
I was just, I was hoping we could, I know they spent a lot of time and effort and.
Absolutely.
Members resource, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks for that.
Kevin, does this need board action?
Uh, there's a signature required.
Oh, yeah, it's here. It's here.
But that's, that's a good thing.
We don't need to vote on anything for the next four weeks?
It's just an acceptance and a signature.
Okay.
Okay. Next up is policy, working through our two hundreds. And you can see in the packet. So two-ten and two-fourteen are in there. I don't think we're suggesting any changes. It's pretty much right in line with MSBA. One of them we just approved in July. So if everyone's all right, I think this will come forward in December as is. Is everybody good with that? Okay. All right. Superintendent Relations? Enough? No. Okay. Informational items, don't have any? Public forum, so if there's anyone here tonight that wants to speak on something that we talked about tonight.
Sure.
All right.
Welcome back. We missed you.
I just finally saw Becky and I'm like, oh, God, here we go again.
I don't know.
Not going to cry, not going to be mad. Well, I was very happy, I'm Karachiuka, by the way. And, you know, I just want to say I'm really happy with the discussion that occurred tonight. So all of this, I'm going to kind of improvise just on a couple of points here because I really feel like a lot of answers and I, I really thought the proposals looked great. So just a few concerns and that I'll highlight. So the October fourth article that was in Prairie Lake American about the MCA scores and how we've declined the last three years. I just, I'm, I just want to make sure that if we are going to have open enrollment for our elementary and obviously if there's some budget issues and we need to stack a few more kids than normal, maybe going forward, that our quality of education is not compromised. It showed that we had a three-year decline with our test scores. And Dr. Stallow, you had mentioned that you weren't going to be taking any different course of what you're currently doing. So I just want to make sure that our quality of education isn't compromised if we have to add a few more open enrollment students. That was one point. Let's see here. So obviously, you know, that many of us were, well, us, we were affected by that recent boundary change. And it seemed like many members were really highly influenced by the areas of interest, specifically twenty-one and forty-two, the verlink property, which now has been, I believe, confirmed to be commercial property. And just, I'm disappointed about that. And through many of the discussions, we were promised or we were told that in-district transfer would get priority over open enrollment. So just in talking with Jeffers Pond at our school, because I call them every week to talk about it, right now, they said current open enrollment and current in-district transfer students have applications. And then in December, new applications for open enrollment will be accepted. And then finally, new in-district transfer students will start applications on January sixteenth. So the question that I have is if we were supposed to get priority, why are we the last one doing these applications? So I just want to make sure that, you know, since we are put in the position that we are and we're such a small neighborhood, that we will be able to. I know a lot of people are torn where we all want to do in-district transfer, even though it's, you know, an inconvenience with, with the bus going right by us. There's a lot of parents that can't commit to taking their kids and picking up their kids. So now our specific neighborhood is divided where we're like, okay, are we all going to try to in-district transfer, rent a shuttle bus, take a bus our kids to school, which we've actually discussed? Or do we all go to Westwood? So that's something I would love some answers about, just if in-district transfer is still going to be getting priority. Jeffers Pond specifically has about, from the numbers I researched and looked at, about twelve and a half to thirteen percent of the students there are open enrolled. Obviously, you know, there's capacity there. So it's still a hard pill to swallow with my property taxes literally doubling in the last two years, that I'm a half a mile away from my school that my kids currently go to and that thirteen percent of students that don't pay the tax dollars that I do are getting into the school that we prefer. I don't know if there's a solution about that. I know we're not going to be having another boundaries discussion, thank God. But that's something I would like everyone to think about or consider. I don't know if we could get grandfathered in to the school, the kids that are currently there. I do know there's been several of my neighbors that have moved out of our neighborhood to be in the Jeffers Pond boundary, which is sad to see as well. So I guess that's all I have, see if that wasn't so bad, right? I don't know if you guys can address these questions or if that's something that's not allowed as a question and answer type of thing. Or at least something to think about that I could relay back to my neighborhood.
Do you want to take an offline question, like?
Is that against the rules?
Well, I, I don't have all the answers right now. But I would, I would encourage Dr. Stoller to reach out. We can talk about process, because I know there's a whole lot of process already involved with in-district, open enrollment, that whole process. There has been, and, you know, you're seeing the end view of it where there's a little bit, a lot more detail to it. So I think, I wonder Jeff or Terry will get that.
Well, and I know there, a big percent of that thirteen percent was like Spring Lake and they're now in the boundaries. So you would almost think by doing a flip-flop with our neighborhoods, there should be no reason we wouldn't all get in. But again, it comes back to, there's some parents that just don't have the capacity to drop off and pick up, so. Maybe just squeeze us in if you want. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to adjourn this and then I'll give a.
Oh, sorry, Becky.
I don't know if I have any difference to say, but I'll go there.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, obviously you guys all know me and I can sign off too, so Becky Schultz, you've heard me talk as well. Yeah, you know, I, I knew this is what we were going to be talking about today. So I put together some things like Kara did as well. I too was really encouraged by the conversation, at least the openness to have the discussion around, you know, what does limiting look like? I would also say, you know, we need to reach out to you, but you, you can reach out to us too. I mean, the community has a lot of ideas on how to help solve some of these problems. And one of the things that I was listening to, when I was listening to you, you know, that would be really helpful would be, as we're looking at the numbers, you know, what are the, what are the per-grade, per-school numbers in those capacities look like? Because I think that helps kind of streamline some of this discussion to, you know, a hundred and twenty-five students spread like peanut butter over, you know, all the schools. It's a little hard to wrap your head around, like, what does that really mean? So that would be a really helpful number. So that would be a really helpful number for everybody. Then we know, you know, if Jeffers, which is, I think, probably, you know, where we go, a really ideal place for a lot of people to open enroll to, but we are, you know, for us, why I think we're so frustrated is we live so close to the school and we've been ousted for people, for, for their convenience, and we're the taxpayers. So I think that's, that's what frustrates the actual taxpayers in this city. I actually brought my proposed tax bill for everyone to, not see, but, I mean, it is, my year-over-year growth in, in my proposed taxes is just outrageous. And we're willing to pay that if we have the quality of education, obviously, but also the choice in our education as well. And I think that's what we were looking for, you know, when we moved here as well. So, you know, I think, I think it's really time for us to, and again, that's why I was so encouraged by the discussion today because I felt like it was an open discussion, like, what is the right way to help pay our bills, but also meet the needs of the community? And that's, that's what we're really looking for. And from, and lastly, I'll just close with, we got the same information. I mean, the same information is that the new in-district transfers are being prioritized last. And that was really frustrating to hear and read. So we're just hoping to kind of have a discussion about that as well because, you know, it's a small subset of a community where we have been super passionate about staying in our community and we don't like that we're prioritized last over everyone else. So that was really, really frustrating for us. So we're hoping to have that continued conversation about in-district transfer and making, you know, the whole, the whole district better. So that's it. I'm not sure you said it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cara.
All right, a couple minutes. What do people need, two, three minutes, five minutes?
One minute.
One minute? Five? Okay, let's go with, let's go with like three minutes. Okay?